Okay. Good morning, everyone. If you'll turn off your cell phones or put them on melody or whatever so they don't bother us, please. Did mine? Oh, and 11:17, we're going to hear on a testing, a national testing of technology and security. So... Okay, the October 3, 2018 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live. KCLV, Cable Channel 2, and our closed caption for hearing impaired viewers. Please note, customers of CenturyLink Cox Communication may view this program in high definition on Channel 1002. You may also watch this meeting live on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire TV and the Go Vegas application. Wow, we keep adding to this. Okay, the council meeting as well as all other KCLV programming may be viewed on the Internet at These proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., also on Friday at 4:00 p.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m. the following Monday at 5:00 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler systems. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers going out to the mezzanine. Proceed out the double doors to the terrace, go down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with one of our marshals or fire official for assistance. Once outside, please assemble on northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis Street and First. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online in the clerk's office at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone's present today who has need for hearing impaired equipment, please see the city clerk's staff up front. If you parked in the parking garage across the street, please be sure to have your ticket validated by our security officers when exiting. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Rabbi Yitzh纬in Young Israel Ash of Las Vegas and remain standing for the pledge. Good morning again, Rabbi.
Good morning, and thank you. Thank you for inviting me. You know, the Jewish people have just finished a plethora of high holidays. One of them, which probably everyone is familiar with, is it's called in the Hebrew Sukkot, but it's known in the Bible as the Feast of Tabernacles. And it is a time of rejoicing for the entire world because in the days of antiquity, so when the Jewish people had this temple in Jerusalem, for 1,300 years, they would bring sacrifices and prayers for prosperity and divine assistance for every person in the world. So in that respect, it was very much an international holiday and therefore a time of rejoicing because it would bring the world together. But there is one other beautiful point that I think really hits the seed of joyfulness and happiness for everyone. That is that even today, the way we celebrate is we move out of our homes, we go into a hut with palm fronds on the top, and I sleep there with all my boys and my daughter, and you know, we've been eating there. It's been a little hot the last week. But still, it's a message to remind, it reminds us about all the miracles that God performed for the Israelites the 40 years we wandered in the desert. And the essence of is, of course, if God took care of me before, there is no reason he will not take care of me in the future. That is the main essence of faith in God. Looking in our past, seeing how the Almighty has helped us in the past, and then in the future, having confidence he will do the same. And the other aspect is, of course, that it is a temporary hut. And knowing that this world is temporary, we come in and we leave. And we are all grasped, you know, we build buildings and look for a sense of permanence with retirement funds and stability, and I'm in control. But really, living this holiday of Sukkot is to remind us, we're not so much in control. God is in control. And if the wind is going to come and blow, it's going to blow. And we will have faith that at least today, everything will go smoothly. So I want to give a blessing to this council. We make, you make important decisions, and you should have plenty of divine assistance and divine guidance. And then may the Almighty shine his favor upon you. And may we all live with a greater sense of internal peace and joyfulness, knowing that the Almighty is protecting us. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on its mission of power, indivisible, free, and just as strong.
Did you hear people talking, saying the pledge? I didn't hear it.
I didn't either. Are you looking to help somebody on his birthday? Two days ahead, does he need it? It is the 7th, even though today is the 3rd. Are you going for a party out back? Okay, all right, and we are coming down for the ceremonials. Thank you. As you can tell, council and I love all of you. And so it's wonderful for us to get out there. And I see Councilman Creer has his running shoes on today. Got your pink. Breast cancer awareness. And tomorrow night is... First game, first match. So go Golden Knights. And even my, one of my staff has a tie his wife made him that's wherever he is. Are you in pink or are you? No, you're dressed appropriately. The traffic, I'm so sorry, the traffic's impossible. But we will be in heaven once this is over, thank heavens. Because I know councilwoman couldn't believe it either, coming from so close to City Hall. It's like you've come in from Alaska, driving it, I mean, an inch at a time. Okay. So for our first ceremonial item today, Councilman Creer, you've got our Citizen of the Month. You have our Citizen of the Month.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everybody. And as the mayor mentioned, I mentioned to her is that the recognition of this month is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I got my pink on to represent a father of two daughters, a wife, I mean, a husband of a wonderful wife. And so I urge everyone to go get checked. I urge you guys to bring awareness because it's vitally important for you and for your family and our society. So happy, I guess it's not happy, but happy Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So I have the pleasure this morning to introduce our Citizen of the Month, Mr. Billy Chapman. And you know, Mayor, Council, recognize our Citizen of the Month. Mr. Chapman is here. Please join me at the podium, come on up. We're going to tell you a little bit about him, give him a round of applause. So Billy Chapman is a retired school principal and has been a member of the Doolittle Senior Center for over eight years. Mr. Chapman loves all types of outdoor activities, biking, hiking, fishing, gardening, photography, and more. He has taken his personal time to guide Doolittle seniors on several excursions and to serve as instructor over the camera club. One of the most important tasks Mr. Chapman has done for the seniors is to reinvent their community garden. And he continues to make sure the garden has what it needs, along with other members, to ensure the garden continues to be successful and green. Two years ago, Mr. Chapman installed a pathway that made the garden ADA accessible to accommodate people with disabilities who are in wheelchairs and using walkers. This undertaking allows seniors better access to entering and working in the garden. Mr. Chapman has also rebuilt silver garden beds. And his latest amazing task was to build a memorial for DSC's master gardener, Don Fabi, who recently passed away. He donated all of his supplies along with a beautiful tree. I recently found out that in addition to his work at the Doolittle Garden, he also has built several planting beds at the Vegas Roots Garden, which is on Tonopah between Bonanza and Washington. Mr. Chapman is well respected by the Doolittle staff and members of the Senior Center, as well as us at Ward 5. I would like to thank Cassandra Lewis, Principal Community Program Specialist at the Senior Center, for bringing my attention to what Mr. Chapman is doing to enrich the lives of Ward 5 seniors. I don't know if Cassandra's here or not. Is she here? Where is she? Hey, what's going on? They go, hey, those are our Doolittle seniors. What's going on, you guys? I tell you what, if you want somebody to come out and support, the Doolittle seniors always come out and support. We had a great movie in the park on Friday, which is, we had Black Panther. We had a whole group of them out. So it's really fantastic to see them. Thank you, guys, for coming out and supporting our friend, Mr. Chapman. So, Mr. Chapman, you are a prime example of what a community servant is. And in the words of the City of Las Vegas motto, "You are building community to make life better." And I'm proud, as the Ward 5 Councilman, to recognize you as the Ward 5 Citizen of the Month. Thank you very much. Want to say something to? Oh, he's going to pass. Oh, come on, man. It's not like it's many, you know, cameras watching you from all over the city. You sure? Okay, well, thank you very much. We're going to give you a Citizen of the Month. Thank you. You do. There you go, and as a Citizen of the Month. And also, his picture will be displayed. You want to come up here with us? Please come on up. Ophelia, that's a very pretty name, Miss Ophelia. See, we go by, I'm old school, it's Miss Ophelia. It's not just Ophelia, it's Miss Ophelia. My mama taught me well. So, Miss Ophelia, thank you very much in supporting the Doolittle Senior Center, supporting your husband, and supporting everyone in our community. We all know that he couldn't do what he does without you standing right beside him and picking him up when he falls. So absolutely, you take credit for that one, huh? All right, why don't we get a picture? And also, as I told you, his picture will be displayed on the digital display outside of City Hall for a month. And so you can come by and bring your friends and point up there and say, take a look. Let's see who's the man. All right, let's grab a picture.
I was just going to scream it without the microphone, so that works. For our next ceremonial item, I'd like to invite Cox Communication Vice President of Business and Hospitality, the great Mike Bolanini. Hiding, hiding behind our Citizen of the Month. I'm going to keep reading while he's hugging and kissing and shaking. "We have a celebration today because we are recognizing 20 years of Cox Communication in Las Vegas." It seems like an awful lot more. Are you sure it's only 20 years? Mr. Bolanini, are you sure? How are you? Good morning. Is it only 20? Is it only 20 years it seems? That's why you look young. Okay. "Over these years, Cox has been a partner with the city and recently collaborated with us to make Las Vegas a smart gigabyte community. This will take our city's computing power to a completely new level. Funded by the National Science Foundation in 2015, this program's creating a living lab environment for the next generation of gigabyte applicants. Las Vegas is the 25th community. The 25th community is a smart gigabyte community in our country and is focused on developing smart applications that can address local needs such as education, workforce development, public safety, I'm sure transportation, community health. You name it, they can do it." So, Mr. Bolanini, or Mike, thank you for all that you do in our community and everything that Cox provides to us residents, us businesses, and visitors. And we'd be happy to hear from you, but I also have to tell you, he does a wonderful job as chairman of the Chamber, the board of the Chamber of Commerce. So this is a 24/7 workaholic man who fortunately has a lovely wife, Bev. But I'm sure she's not here. Is she here? No, she isn't. Okay, so the microphone's yours. You can say whatever you want to say. And I have a proclamation for you. Here. Thank you. Okay. So we'll hear from you first, if it's all right, and then I'll read you the pro.
Well, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. We really appreciate the recognition. And on behalf of the 1,600 Cox Las Vegas employees, we thank you very much. We are so proud to be part of the fabric of this community. If you, it's interesting, as I look back, I've been with Cox 10 years. I look back to when we acquired the cable system here back 20 years ago. It was a $145 million operation. And last year, we crested over $1.1 billion. We have spent billions of dollars investing in the infrastructure. It is one of our primary markets throughout the country. And we will continue to invest, to expand our network, and to bring technology to the residents and the businesses of Southern Nevada. By the end of this year, I'm happy to announce that any residential home that we pass will have the ability to have gigabit internet within their, within their homes. So this will be the first Cox market in the United States to achieve that. And we're very proud to be part of the Las Vegas community. Thank you.
It's gigabit, right? Well, sorry, folks, gigabyte here, but I don't know much about technology. So, thank you. It's wonderful to learn every day. Every day is a blessing. And so today here, we are going to get great applause and thanks to Cox Communications for including us, for taking care of us all. And October 3, 2018, is being designated as Cox Communication Day here in our city. So congratulations, Mike, and thank everybody on your team. I know your team's so strong around this country, but here in Las Vegas, we appreciate it more than ever. Thank you. Thank you. A photo around. We're getting this down. How about coming in closer? Excellent. For our next item, Councilman Coffin is going to be recognizing a local group.
A local group, that's too understated. Well, okay, so we didn't have a second meeting in September. And so we are now celebrating, still in, but very closer, much closer to the end of Hispanic Heritage Month. And as you know, many of you who are regulars, that we always honor a country within the group. Of course, there are so many, you couldn't possibly have them all. We've had other countries like Chile, and we've had the Central American countries honored individually. But this year, we have picked Peru because it's such a wonderful, wonderful country. And I got to tell you, it's unknown to most North Americans. It is just absolutely unknown. If one in a million has been there in Peru, or even talk about Peru, maybe you see funny pictures of Peruvians up in the mountains, and maybe they have funny hats. Maybe they have a llama around somewhere or two. And I'm not sure that Tony Shea hasn't been there a few times. The point is, though, that the Peruvian Chamber of Commerce, really today, will be accepting on behalf of the entire Latino or Hispanic community. And we have a, we have a lot of things for you all. I just want to know that, I know you're outside in front, who is here for it? Okay. We're going to invite all of you who are officers in the organization. This organization, by the way, represents the oldest civilization that has stayed in its area, finally, when it finished migrating from the Bering Strait, the, you know, between the Land Bridge and the Ice Bridge, as all Native Americans came, that they went to Peru eventually, and then they stayed there. And so many others migrated and/or disappeared or created wars that then helped them succumb to the Spanish. But they were the first, the first country to declare independence in pre-Columbian America. And I have to think that of all of the countries there, it took a lot of guts. But then they are tough, tough Indians, tough Native Americans that lived there at these high altitudes. And you just can't go there and fight them. They will kill you from the high altitude, so to speak. So now we have the officers I'm going to name, and I hope they will join me now at the podium. Umrham Osambela, Teresa Sweeten, Hersilia Zinek, Carlos Lazarte, Guillermo Retis, and Danielle Pele. And Dr. Annette DeJaro, if she's here. She's Cuban invader of Peru. But she's an officer because she's a good person. Here comes the movie. All right. Well, thank you. That was shorter than I expected. Are you sure it's over? Tech crew, thank you very much. It's a country of short people, but I'll tell you what, they're all taller than me today. Presenting a little bit of a word about Peru for us, for us people who don't know anything about it. Let's, let's ask Teresa Sweeten to please speak.
Sure. It's for us a great honor to be here. We thank you, the City of Las Vegas, and we thank you all, you, for coming, you know, and we are really very, very proud to get this award. We are business, a small business community, but we make a lot of noise. There's only very few Peruvians in this city, and we are so grateful. And we love this city very much. We love this great country that gave us, opened us the door, and gave us all the opportunities. Thank you so much. I know we have so many representative of so many different countries, different communities. We want our Latino community to do well in business and be part of our big, beautiful country. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. The mayor is curious, what is the population now of the country? Here are 6,000 people now in the valley? Okay. Well, that says something. That is a block of people who are in business. And remember, in the Latino culture, the, really, the business community is really the leadership. The Latin chamber, as most of you know, has been around for more than 40 years, and it has assumed a leadership role. There are other chambers forming. And people recognize that in Latin America particularly, Peru specifically, if you've got a wagon, and you have a donkey, or you have an ox, and you're at high altitude, believe me, not just any horse can live in these places. It doesn't matter where you are, really, sea level or 10,000. The point is that you're a small business person, and they think of themselves as small business people. Everyone. Everyone does. All you have to do is have a little asset, maybe the equivalent of a couple hundred dollars, to move around, and literally, you're in business. And they treat themselves, they think of themselves as business people. And one has to remember that, even the professionals do. But it's important to know that that's their attitude. And I had to bring it here. And that is the attitude of so many people who want to come here, that we ought to allow to come here. Thank you very much. And now I have, Teresa, for you in the group, I have a proclamation from us. Whereas we, the mayor and the city council, are honored to pay special tribute to the 207,000 Hispanic/Latino-Americans who reside in the City of Las Vegas and represent 32% of the City of Las Vegas population. Whereas a result of their determination, intelligence, hard work, and perseverance, Hispanics/Latino-Americans, you see that is still in dispute, have contributed immensely to the growth and stability of our city, helping to shape the character and future of this city. Whereas the Peruvian Chamber of Commerce, Umrham Osambela, President Teresa Sweeten, the Vice President Hersilia Zinek, Director of Education, Carlos Lazarte, Director of Local Business Development, and Dr. Yema Retis, and Danielle Pele, and Dr. Annette DeJaro, who I don't think is here. Again, a Cuban who has adopted Peru. What can you say? This is Hispanic Heritage Month, and we honor you and proudly proclaimed in the beginning, September 15 through October 15, as Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you. We have one for everybody. We have one for everybody. And Congresswoman, Congresswoman Rosen also sent a special certificate of recognition, congressional recognition, to the Chamber of Commerce. So that's very kind. We didn't know that was coming. Think about it, folks, a third of the population of the city. In my district, Ward 5, which we all know is the east side of town, it's 65% Latino. There's always a discussion about Latino, Hispanic, and now there's a new word, of course, Latinx. You'll hear more about that. God knows that the fight will never end. Thank you very much. All right. Photo time.
Thank you. Thank you. As you all know, we are so proud of our Las Vegas city team. And so at this point, Councilman Soroka's got the wonderful honor of recognizing one of the best of the best of our teams. So, Councilman, yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, and it is great. I get to talk about happiness today and kindness. We're going to celebrate camp kindness right now. And could I invite our amazing leader of our Parks and Recreation, Maggie Plaster? Can you come on down? While you're, while you're coming down, and you're going to see a chain coming down. Come on down. Especially this week, where we're celebrating the coming together, our Vegas Strong and our Vegas Stronger. And next year, it'll be Vegas Strong Guest. We get to celebrate kindness. And Maggie is our Acting Director of Parks and Recreation. And I want to recognize her on behalf of the city for her great efforts and her department. on behalf of the city for her great efforts and her department fostering kindness in our city's youth programs and the kids that attend them. Earlier this year, in the spring, the American Camp Association sent out a call for support for Camp Kindness Day. The City of Las Vegas Department of Parks and Recreation answered the call and took it one step further with an entire 11-week kindness curriculum for our campers. The 11-week curriculum included weekly themes dedicated not only to the city's values of kind, committed, and smart, but also compassion, caring, gratitude, responsibility, helpfulness, self-care, respect, committed, generosity, and self-discipline. Each theme was given a color represented on that chain that you will see. And every time a camper witnessed an act of kindness of another camper, a paper link was created to memorialize it. These are the chains we brought in this morning. And I had the opportunity to see their culminating event at the Veterans Memorial Community Center, where there were 500 campers. And they had to flex because it was 114 degrees that day, and you had to bring some of them inside, and they did a great job adjusting on the fly. But Maggie, I understand there's a short video right now that best shows what you did for our campers at Camp Kindness. Could we roll that now?
Kindness means that you are like nice to one another.
Kindness means to me, well, a lot of different things. For example, being kind, secure responsibility, and being kind helps a lot of people in life.
Kindness means like respecting and being nice to each other, helping, and a lot of things that makes the world look a better place.
What I learned about kindness is that you respect others, you be kind to one another.
Treat others how you want to be treated. You should always show kindness and not wait for people to show it to you.
I've learned about kindness and stumbled about like being nice to each other and doing good stuff.
My name is Joyce Barrow-Henderson. I work for the Department of Parks and Recreation as a supervisor. The American Camp Association came up with the concept of Camp Kindness Day. Those of us who are part of the American Camp Association got this cry for help. It seemed like a no-brainer for us, being that our core values are kind, smart, and committed, that we were not only going to participate in Camp Kindness, but we adopted it and wove it throughout all 12 weeks of our camp. We saw this as an opportunity to help build a true character trait in our participants that would last them throughout life. We designed the curriculum, giving them key attributes of what it means to be kind. We broke down every week to help build them up so that they truly understood the concept of being kind.
I'm Lakeisha Dickens. I'm the Senior Community Program Specialist here at East Las Vegas Community Center. So here at East Las Vegas, we did 45 minutes, two times a week, and we would do the link for the week, we would do the activity, we would talk about what the theme was. They were simple enough activities to get the kids thinking. I also think that they were really looking forward to doing the links each week because it gave them a chance to express themselves.
Hi, I'm Nicole Kurwitz, Principal Community Program Specialist here at Veterans Memorial Community Center. One particular week, we had over 1,000 links that the kids have earned. It's spilling over into not only just our camp, but within our facility. It's just been a really positive experience all summer long.
I believe that Camp Kindness has transformed Summer Camp by teaching kids to just be kind. I learned that there are so many different ways to teach kindness.
I'm extremely proud of the staff who jumped right in. It was second nature to them.
Respect is one of the ones that impacted our facility, our counselors, our kids.
You have to respect people every day for them to respect you. You've got to treat people with care.
I think the kids stop to think about what they say because we've talked about, you know, how to be respectful of others. Sometimes you can just not say anything.
The kids have grown. I definitely think they teach us how we really are truly impacting them and why we do what we do.
We have a new generation who are understanding of what compassion truly means, and they're socially minded, and they're going to be community-oriented people. They're our next generation of folks who will serve each other and understand that they're not just here for themselves.
It was great. I love the campaign. I would continue to want to incorporate it into our programs, not only just Summer Camp, but I think there's a lot of other ways that we can continue to grow and make it even better for next year.
Thank you. And Maggie, on behalf of the city, we'd like to present you with the certificate of recognition for Camp Kindness. And it reads, "The mayor and the city council of the city of Las Vegas, thank you for following through in your mission to nurture, teach, inspire a new generation of compassionate, socially-minded, community-oriented citizens and to practice intentional kindness. Thank you for your commitment to our city's youth and your initiative in fostering kindness in our city's programs." Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. I stand over here. So I think you can all see why Discover the Fun is our tagline in Parks and Recreation. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Councilman Soroka, thank you so much for the recognition. My name's Maggie Plaster. I'm the Acting Director of Parks and Recreation. Summer Camp is our best and our busiest time of the year, and this year was no exception because our campers learned the importance of kindness, and they reinforce that knowledge every week by filling out the links and learning more about what they can do to be better people. Parks and Recreation provides lifelong learning opportunities for our residents. We believe our campers developed a new understanding and appreciation for one another and for the act of kindness, and that's going to carry them throughout their lives. I need to take a moment to show gratitude to the amazing team that made this happen. I want to thank our fearless leader, Joyce Barrow-Henderson, for coordinating Camp Kindness and thinking of an incredible way that our department could support the city's core values of kind, committed, and smart. I want to thank our site coordinators, Keisha Dickens, Ronnie Fuller, Nicole Kurwitz, Edric Dickens, Kathy Burkhart, and Kenny Beckham, who were instrumental in bringing the concept to fruition. Keisha and Ronnie and Nicole are all back there. I want to thank our senior center coordinators for getting their participants involved. I want to thank Kira Smith for making that amazing video. I want to thank all of our staff who worked Summer Camp and who modeled kindness to our campers all summer long. And I also want to thank our Parks and Rec kids who are here today. We have Taryn, Nia, Madison, Ryan, and Lake. So they're all here, and we're at camp this summer. So this isn't a one-and-done initiative. We will be working on a kindness is contagious initiative to reinforce kindness. And this is Taryn. She's Joyce's daughter, and she has some gifts for you.
Oh, so you have to give one. Send back. I was gonna say.
Yep.
Is there? No, I'm sleeping.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Maggie. Acting Director, Parks and Recreation, Maggie. Thank you. Stay for a photo. We'll need a photo. We're holding our gifts as well. Thank you. Can you give one to Council? Oh, you got one? Is Joyce? Maggie, would you like the chains to come down for the photo? Bring the chains on down, and all of you that carried the chains.
Come on down.
And this is our logo for next year. Okay, you can come right in front.
Yeah, come right up here, across the middle. Bring her right across the middle, right across the middle. Yeah, there you go. Can somebody push the podium? That's okay. Look at all, look at all the kindness inspired in our community. Wow. Maggie, you think there's nearly 6,000 rings? Is that what you estimate?
We have about a third of them here. We have about a third of all the rings that we filled out there here today.
Wow, about a third. Wow. Squeezing. How are we looking? How are we looking? Looking good?
All right, Maggie, where's probably his cook? I washed my clothes. That's really kind for his parents.
Ready for the photo?
He did some chores. He did some chores.
Mayor, come on.
I haven't done this side.
Well, it's definitely two. Look at Stephanie first.
Hello. Thumbs up. Thumbs up for kindness. There you go. Awesome.
And then picture in the back. Hurry up. She has to wait till it's come to us.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Thank you for the recognition.
You deserve more.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, it was fun. And she led us, she got behind it and was like, go.
Well, thank you for allowing her to do it.
Allowing us to do it.
Absolutely.
You want to break them?
There is no better Parks and Recreation Department in the entire world than ours. It is the best. Because everybody loves what they do, and boy, do we have great facilities and parks. It's wonderful. Okay, for our next item, National Fire Prevention Week and Mayor Pro Tem. This is yours, you lucky lady.
Can I help you with anything here? Well, these will be the others too. That's a tough act to follow. I don't have any chocolate kisses. I don't have any caramel candy. Where the heck did I miss out there? I want to say good morning, everyone. And I want to say, excuse me, look, listen, learn. Wait a minute. I'm waiting until my... Till your honorees stop hugging and kissing and shaking hands. Yes, I'm waiting. I want to say, look, listen, learn, be aware. Fire can happen anywhere. That's this year's theme for National Fire Prevention Week, which will be observed October 7 through the 13th. Look for places fire could happen and address the problems. Listen, know the sound of the smoke alarm. Learn two ways out of every room. And I want you to know, I went through every room mentally in my mind, and I figured I can get out two ways. Each year, for the past 10 years, I've had the honor every October of being able to represent the council in proclaiming Fire Prevention Week. But this year's different because it's my last year to do so, so it's a little bittersweet for me. I'm going to call up our Fire Chief Willie McDonald and our Fire Marshal Chief Robert Nolan, and ask perhaps if Chief Nolan can give us a few tips for fire safety. And don't anybody in this room think, oh, my gosh, I've heard this all before, because I can tell you some stories about fires that happened in Ward 1 that our gentlemen came and helped with, that were silly little things that we, as human beings, sometimes forget to do appropriately. Are you going to, oh.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The National Fire Protection Association has sponsored the public observance of Fire Prevention Week since 1922. President Calvin Coolidge proclaimed Fire Prevention Week a national observance in 1925, making it the longest-running public health observance in the United States. This year's prevention campaign, look, listen, learn, be aware, fire can happen anywhere. Chief Nolan?
Thank you very much, Chief McDonald. Fire Prevention Week is observed each year during the week of October 9 in commemoration of the great Chicago Fire, which began October 8, 1871, in the city of Chicago, the team that will not be hosting a World Series game this year. Oh, sorry, Cubby fans, sorry, Cubby fans. To kick off Fire Prevention Week, October 7 through the 13th, Las Vegas Fire and Rescue will be hosting a safety fair from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Saturday, October 6, at the Indian Hills Apartment Community located at 4550 West Sahara Avenue, your ward. Now, traditionally, we've had an open house where we've invited people to come to a fire station, but this year, following the lead of our amazing youth development and social innovation program and their amazing mobile pre-K, we are taking our event out into the community. And we're recognizing this group, this ownership group of apartment buildings that have over 600 residents for their desire to go above and beyond the minimum code standards and provide fire extinguishers for every unit, upgrade their fire alarm system way beyond the code requirement. It's a large national group. We're going to award their ownership and their partners all in living, who are national all throughout the Sun Belt, and they're adopting our risk-reduction model throughout all of their facilities. And we hope you can join us. I know you have a very busy itinerary on Saturday. In addition, throughout the week, there will be several smoke alarm installation events and daily informational messages broadcast by the award-winning KCLV and your local news affiliate that we hope you'll tune in. So some of those safety tips you talked about will be home cooking safety, exit drills in the home, which is really about the behavior of people towards fire safety in their homes. If we can get them to practice their drill, how to use 911, which is a big impact on emergency services, as well as candle safety and senior citizen fall prevention. So those will be some of the messages and some of the tips that we'll be offering.
You know, these fire workers, they come up with all kinds of wonderful ideas. They're going to take a fire engine and go up to somebody, a senior's home that doesn't know they're coming, and they're going to offer to give them some free fire safety materials, right?
And install smoke alarms at no charge.
And install smoke alarms, give them the smoke alarms free, and install them at no charge, right? And they do this all the day, all year long, they're doing things like this throughout the community. And sometimes we take that for granted, but nobody should be taken for granted. They really do a super job. Before I present the proclamation, I'd like to call up a couple of gentlemen I want to recognize, this is my last time here. These are gentlemen who both work very hard in our community to make Las Vegas a safer place. Tim Samansky is the Public Education and Information Officer for the Las Vegas Fire and Rescue. Tim, can you come up, please? And Chris Baderman is the Lead Instructor for the Bonanza High School Fire Academy. Can you please join us? I want to present, I'm presenting here, a thank you from our city council to Tim Samansky for all that he has done to increase fire safety. And I got to tell you, he's all over the place. I go safe with the ducks over at the Heinrich YMCA, and he's there. I find out that some gentleman in our area, about three blocks from me, decided he'd cut the limbs on his tree, and he cut them into a fire that he had in his backyard because he thought that would be an easier way to do it. So he was in the tree cutting, and he's dropping them, and all of a sudden, guess what happened? All the whole thing caught on fire, and his house caught on fire. And Tim was there, and Tim was there to let everybody know what we need to do, and he helped him a lot in taking care of his problem. And I know I'm educating him also, Tim. I could speak forever on what Tim's done to dedicate his life to fire and rescue. He's been in the fire service for over 41 years. He's the Public Education and Information Officer that sends out to all of us those little short notices of where a fire is and what happened and what to avoid. He has worked in every position from firefighter, paramedic, to fire chief. He is a Nevada Certified Fire Service Master Instructor, and he holds national and state certifications. He has received numerous awards, local, state, and national. He has received numerous awards, local, state, and national, including the 2008 Liberty Mutual National Fire Mark Award for Community Education and the Community Service Award from the Nevada Broadcasters Association. And he was the Fire and Emergency PIO during the 1996 Olympics in Atlanta. So he's been all over the place doing great things. And Tim, would you say a few words for us?
I just want to say, for the last 10 years, she says she's been doing this. I've been working with Councilwoman at a lot of events. She's float like a duck for the last 10 years. And I have to admire her, just this last one, it's 115 degrees, and she's sitting out there at a table in the sun, passing out safety literature to the people. We've done a lot of senior events together, the Christmas dinners, and we were passing off fire extinguishers as door prizes and that. And she really got into the community, and I really enjoyed it. But the one point I want to get across is, five years ago, my own home caught fire. And after doing this job for almost 50 years and helping people that've gone through a fire, you really can appreciate how devastating it is to your family emotionally. I don't care about the contents emotionally, what your family goes through if you have a fire. And the phone calls we got of people wanting to give us assistance, saying that we'd be back in our home for two weeks. Our home was put on fast track, and we were gone for six months. Everything we owned was taken away from us. We had to live in a place. You rebuild a home, the insurance company just puts the money, but we have a little boy that lives with us, and he was up every single night, the whole time we were gone, crying because we weren't in our own house, and why is everything gone? And I laid there and thought, I didn't know that families go through this. It's as bad as having a death in your own home, when your home is gone. And when you drive by it and see your only house on the street, being dark when everybody else's house is lit up and you can't go in your house, it really hurts. We can't stress enough how different fires are today. They're very fast, so when that smoke alarm goes off, it means get out. You've got less than three minutes. And we've just had two fadals in the city within the last couple of months, and the fires weren't even noticed by the neighbors. The people came home in each case to find one of their family members dead, and the neighbors never even knew there was a fire. There was no evidence on the outside. It is completely different. And this is why smoke alarms and sprinkler systems are so important. We have to get out in front of it. And we appreciate all the support we get from the mayor and council on these prevention programs, but especially you, because you've always been there with me in the past. And as an educator, you know how important it is to teach people to be safe. So thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you very much, Tim. You do a lot here in the community. And I...
When you see a big fire or smoke, give them your Twitter handle so they follow up your feed.
Oh, he wants us to give a Twitter handle. Can you give that?
Oh, so if you want, you can follow us on Twitter. It's LasVegasFD. And I put all the information on there about if we have a fire. So I get a lot of calls like from the mayor. I know she's following me, and a lot of the council people follow me, because if I misspell something, they tell me about it. But they want to know what that big column of smoke is, and a lot of people do, and it's really amazing how many people will tweet and say, where is that smoke coming from? So I try to get that out as soon as I find out about it, so people can relax and find out it's just a dumpster and it's not their home and that. So if you want up-to-the-minute information on what's going on, and I mean, I get up at 2:00 in the morning and do it too, because people hear fire trucks going through their community, and they get scared, and they lay in bed worrying if something bad is happening, I try to get that information out as quickly as possible, so people can relax and know that their community is protected and safe.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you very much. And Chris Baderman?
Over here.
Whoops. Oh, Chris. Chris is the Bonanza Fire Science Academy Lead Instructor at Bonanza High School. And do you know how that all started, Chris?
Chief Gammon actually helped out with that, Fire Chief of Las Vegas Fire and Rescue.
I want you to know, it just shows you, you got that beautiful program over there, which gets lots of accolades throughout the country. And what happened was, there was a donut hole of need near Bonanza High School, so we needed to build a new fire station, which we did. And then we thought, and I as an educator thought this, my goodness, we have Bonanza right across from us, we have our magnet schools. I had been involved in those, and I thought, wouldn't it be wonderful if we could have sort of a magnet school for fire science and everything? And so I introduced the idea, and Chief Gammon and I just went with it right away. It was marvelous. And I want to tell you, we're so proud of what you've done. But what I'm trying to say is, it was a negative, no donut hole with no help with fire prevention, and we made it into something so successful it received national publicity. So would you like to say a few words about your program?
I'd love to say thank you for you. We've had over 1,000 students just in the last six years being part of our program. And a number of those students have been on the Fire Department in Las Vegas, Clark County, North Las Vegas, and Henderson, as well as all the wildland on the southwest region of the United States. And it's just, it's an honor to be an educator, but it's even a bigger honor to educate students into a career that I just absolutely love and I think is an amazing pathway for students. And it's something that the Clark County School District does an amazing job of with our CTE Department. And with your help, it's just been an unbelievable amount of support we've received, and we thank you for everything you've done and for Las Vegas Fire and Rescue as well.
I just want to say, I didn't do it, I just thought of it. You all did it, you all did the work, because once the idea was introduced, the educational side, CCSD, put it together, and the community college sort of stole Gammon from us and hired him. So he was there and put it all into place. So you made it as good as it is today, and we're very proud. I wanted to just mention that the goal of the program is to certify high school students in their firefighter one, CPR, basic EMT, as well as obtaining college credit for the program. So they receive high school credit, and they receive college credit. And students learn to understand the laws, regulations, requirements needed within the fire science profession. They're introduced to first aid, CPR, and basic life safety techniques. He did not say something wonderful about himself. He was recently named the 2018 Teacher Educator of the Year by the Nevada Association for Career and Technical Education. So Chris, I want to thank you for all you've done and present this to you on behalf of our council. It just says appreciation for all that you have done. Thank you very much. Thank you. And now, thank you, Chris. And I'm going to ask Chief McDonald and Chief Nolan to come up just quickly, because I know the mayor's wondering, how long is she going to take?
You have a few minutes.
Yeah. I have this proclamation, which each year we've presented, because all that you do to maintain the safety and security within our city, and roughly 3,000 people die and 353,000 people are injured each year by fires in the home, and you've worked so very hard in helping that with our free smoke alarms, with our free fire extinguishers. You've always been there whenever we've asked, and whenever you have free time, your fire engines are out there. They were there last night at our, the big thing that we had.
National Night Out.
Yeah, at our National Night Out. And we had a nice crowd there, and I know that a lot of people appreciated your being there. So we, the mayor, and the members of the Las Vegas City Council proudly proclaim October 7th to 13th, 2018, as Fire Prevention Week for the year of 2018, and we're presenting you with this. Okay. But I want you to all look at these wonderful fire personnel. Where do you think the Golden Knights got their colors and their look right off of our Fire Department? I look at you, and I see great, great history, and I know the Knights proudly wear their uniforms. But you're the way, look at them. You are prototypically Golden Knights, so let's have a picture. Golden Knights in all ways. Let's go forward.
Come closer, closer, closer. We can get closer.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. We will now, that concludes our ceremonials this morning, and we will allow technology to reboot, and so we will take a 10-minute recess here. And hello, Mr. Malaski. We're excited. Thank you for all that you've done for our community for all these decades. We love you, we appreciate you, and we thank you. Not that we don't love everybody else, but special person.
Let's get in front of the City Hall sign. Very good. So let's do it this way. Thank you.
This picture is going to the...
With our respect. With our respect.
Oh, this is Mike.
Oh, this is Mike. This is all.
We are able to continue. And so our first agenda item is 12.
Yes.
However, beforehand, Councilman Creer would like to welcome up here on the dais from Las Vegas Academy, wherever. Councilman Creer, are you out wandering around? Okay, here's Councilman Creer, who will introduce this lovely, talented lady from Las Vegas Academy.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one moment of personal privilege. I'd like to introduce someone who's going to be working with us for the next school year, and that is our intern, Ms. Jacqueline Espinoza, who is here, who is a, I'm going to let her tell you a little bit about herself real quick and where she's in school. Then also, you're going to let her know where you're going to college. Because one thing's for certain, if you're hanging out with me, you're going to college. Hit the red button there.
Hello, my name is Jacqueline Espinoza. I'm 16. I go to Las Vegas High School. I'm a soccer player. I would like to join the Navy after high school, and I would like to become a medic in the Navy. Those are my plans.
That's awesome. You know, my father was a doctor, as I told you. And also Colonel Soroka, who is a retired colonel. So we're going to put you in touch with him, and then we're going to get you involved and also with our Veterans Affairs things, because you're going to be doing fantastic stuff. Welcome. We're lucky to have you. We're going to have a lot of fun, and you're going to be busy.
Okay, thank you, and welcome. So we are now going to go on into, "Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action." The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-reference to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council will not be responding or engaging in dialogue. We will set the time at 1:00. And I have cards from Eric Hirschberger, who I know is going to make comments about Agenda Item 77. I'd like you to do it now, because the item is a non-public hearing item. And then, sir, we'll hear your comments right after. Thank you.
No, you have to push a button. There you go.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I just want to go on record that I'd like to, before you grant this EOT, to sit down with the developer, because there are some issues that will impact my property. So I'm just asking that to happen prior to the EOT.
Thank you very much. What we will do, and I know because I mentioned, thank you to our clerk's office, mentioned me, you to me, so I mentioned you to Councilman Coffin, and if you will speak with him, he has your information.
Very good. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, real quick, I just want to recognize and say hello to my friend, Eric Hirschberger, longtime classmate of mine. He was in the class before me with my brother, Bishop Gorman. So longtime resident of Vegas, but first time here at City Hall, so walk him down, my friend.
Thanks for having me. Appreciate it.
Well, you've got a friend, Councilman Coffin. He's Gorman as well.
That's right. That's right. He laid the groundwork.
Oh, my. Wait one second. Could, we need a towel. Wait here.
Get a towel, please.
Thank you. Okay, anybody that's in back, could you bring a towel? We've had a little spill. Please. Okay, it's wonderful to be so well-connected through our IT. Yes, sir, please.
Good morning, Council, Mayor. My name is John Lasky. I live at 712 Langtree Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada. Been in town for 50 years. It's wonderful to stand in this new chamber. I can remember when it was the old armory downtown. And then the City Hall after that. So I've been here for 50 years, worked in the Y for 36 years in this town. And I'm retired now. And I ended up being in charge of property and maintenance. And the reason I came today was because I'm concerned about Lorenzi Park. I'm going to leave this paperwork with you. I've been talking for several years with several people in the park, and electricians and things. We currently have 44 lights that do not work correctly around the pond. And people are walking at night in the hot of summer. This cannot go on. You also have a total of 11 over the parking that aren't working. There's something wrong, because when I talked about this, they said there was a problem from the manufacturer from the beginning. And it's said that the city has now got 44 lights five years later, and what you're going to have to do is buy new lights.
Thank you. What we're going to do with that, if you'll give it to our city clerk, we will turn it over to Public Works.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if, Mike Jansen, could you, again, your name is John Lasky?
Yeah, Lasky.
If you could come down and meet him and give him your map, that would be perfect. Thank you. We'd like that. But in the future, when you find that we've got lights out, just call City Hall.
I've called the City Hall. This is why I'm here today, because I did call.
Meet the most wonderful Public Works Department Chair, Mike Jansen.
And also, Madam Mayor, like I mentioned, I apologize for interrupting you, but you can always call our office, 702-229-5443. Harry is going to take charge of this, and we will get this resolved ASAP.
I'm going to leave, I don't want to take up all your time, I'm going to leave a whole stack of photos for you. The other thing is, there's a whole bunch of plants that are currently dying in the park. They're not being taken care of. I asked that dog bags two weeks ago be placed in the dog bag carriers, and we still are empty down there.
We would love to hear from you very soon, because you'll see it's taken care of. And this, I'm here, Jackson right here, from Mayor, from Councilman Creer's Ward 5, who owns Lorenzi Park.
And the only other thing is that my recommendation is that if someplace along the line, if you can find some money, it would be wonderful, in the office space at 337, which is an empty office there now, would be a great place to put a park office, so somebody could walk in, talk to somebody, rent the spaces, do something, and manage the park. Second of all, maybe it's a good place to place a marshal, especially since we know we have some homeless and other problems in the park. This way, that there'll be somebody to respond and meet and become part of the neighborhood.
Good ideas. Thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So our Head of Parks and Recreation, interim, are you here, Ms. Blaster? Okay. Mr. Acker, you will get the information across. I think it's a great idea to have a little office, maybe once a week or something, that people can go in. Best ideas come from our people. Thank you. Your name, please.
Luis Gutierrez, regarding 3977 East Owens Avenue. I just heard, regarding item 77, Mr. Coffin, this is a one-vote motion. I think it's irrelevant. He's asking for us to talk. I don't know where this is going to lead to.
The only, the reason.
I need a clarification.
Okay. The reason I pulled Mr. Hertzbacher down was because I knew he wanted to make a comment. Clerk had told me. It is a non-public hearing item. So if you had a comment on number 77, or I think 76 maybe, but 77 for sure, I would invite you to contact Councilman.
I have no comments.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, don't go into dialogue.
I just don't understand his request at this time.
Okay.
Mr. Gutierrez. Felipe Ortiz, at the back of the room, underneath President Washington, now Jefferson, now Lincoln, will help you. Because that's an item, those three items are in Ward 3.
Thank you.
And the previous speaker as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir? If you'll come forward and state your name. We don't need the address, just your name, please.
My name is Arthur Yoshida, and I'm here this morning to oppose the proposed change in the short-term residential rental use on item number 107 in the agenda.
Is that yours?
The reason why I'm opposing this particular proposal is I'm a local resident. I live about two blocks away, and I've seen some abuse in our neighborhood, where some of these nice, beautiful homes here have been turned into a short-term type rentals, where they painted their building and with all kinds of fancy designs, you know, private semi-custom-to-custom type homes here. And I just don't think this is appropriate.
Sir, okay. What I'm going to suggest is, I understand, and if you'll just wait a few moments for Mayor Protem to read the abayed items that are going to be continued, but also for Councilwoman Tarkanian, if you want to make an appointment with her office, she would welcome that. And I just saw Kim Reed go by. She'll probably come back out.
We did have her come back, sir, but as the mayor said.
You have to have your microphones off.
As the mayor said, this has been obeyed by the person who requested it. We did not obey it.
So it has come from the applicant to postpone it, to obey it. And if you'll just wait one moment, because the Councilwoman, Mayor Protem, has to read these, and then we have to vote on it, and once we've affirmed the vote, then it will be continued to a later date, which you'll be apprised of. Okay?
Okay, so that vote will be done today?
No, you're going to, it will not be done today if the abeyance passes. So just wait one moment. Have a seat, please.
Okay, thank you very much.
And understand, please, sir, it will not be done today by request of the applicant. The applicant requested that.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I will close public comment. We'll move on to Agenda Item 13 for possible action. Any items that council staff applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. But hold on, please, I've lost my pen. Now I got it. Okay, Mayor Protem, would you please attend to these?
These following items that I'm going to mention have been requested to be held in abeyance, withdrawn, or re-stricken. Discussion Item Number 50, proposed City of Las Vegas bill draft request to provide resources to support services and/or facilities for the homeless or indigenous persons, has been stricken, requested by staff. Item Number 53, request for City Council staff compensation adjustments, has been stricken by the sponsor. Items 56 and 55, approval or denial of the change of ownership of a medical marijuana establishment licensed dispensary and a retail marijuana store licensed recreational sales from NatureX2 LLC to NatureX2 LLC doing business as Blackjack Collective at 1860 Western Avenue, it is being withdrawn by the applicant without prejudice. Item Number 80, GPA 73577, the applicant, UpGrowth Nevada LLC, owner, United States of America. An item to amend the trails element of the 2020 master plan and all related maps, an abeyance is being requested by the applicant until 11/7/18. Items 81 and 82, GPA 73578, applicant UpGrowth Nevada LLC, owner, United States of America, on a portion of 146.07 acres on the southwest and northeast sides of the Clark County 215, generally bounded by Anne Road, Walupai Way, Washburn Road, and Alpine Ridge Way, and is being requested by applicant to obey to 11/7/18. Item Number 87, applicant owner Gary D. and Tori R. Jackson, on .27 acres at 332 South Crestline Drive. The applicants have requested abeyance to October 17, 2018. Item Number 88, SUP 73499, applicant owner Richard Kent Caldwell Jr. at 1901 Beverly Way. The applicant has requested abeyance to 116, 2019. Item Number 89, SUP 72379, applicant owner Richard and Stanley Turim at 641 Ampere Drive. And the applicant has requested that this be withdrawn without prejudice. Items 91 to 103, SUP 73781, SUP 73783, SUP 7374, SUP 73785, SUP 73786, SUP 73787, SUP 73788, SUP 73789, SUP 73790, SUP 73791, SUP 73792, SUP 73793, and SUP 7395. The applicant is Brock Menska, owner Big Block Partners LLC, at 1015 South Third Streets, units 111 to 10 to 11 to 12 to 13 to 14 to 15, 310, 311, 312, 313, 314, and 315. The applicant has requested abeyance to November 7, 2018. Item Number 104, SUP 73838, applicant Jonathan Gonin, owner 777 Ventures LLC, at 1413 Maria Elena Drive. The applicant has requested abeyance to 11/7/2018. And finally, Item Number 107, applicant owner SUP 73821, applicant owner David Kirk and Heather Kim at 2010 South Buffalo. And we want to note that the correct applicant owner is Yang Luck. Abeyance to 11/21/2008 has been requested by the applicant. And that, Mayor, is your motion.
That takes out almost the entire agenda. So there's a motion, please, please vote. No, 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 no. Please, there's a motion made by Mayor Protem. Please vote.
But not yet. No.
Please post.
Your Honor, I've been trying to get your attention for a long time.
Yes.
I think on one of those, we've received legal advice that, I think it's specifically item 88, that because they wanted a, he wanted a very long abeyance, that Legal Division advised me yesterday that tabling to January, tabling instead of obeying is the proper term to use for a motion on that specific item. Can I get some advice? I'm sorry, I think it was Brian Scott who gave me that advice.
Brian Scott, or?
It's an element of expense, and also, that person will still have to re-notify all those neighbors.
If I recall, Mr. Summerfield suggested that tabling the item would be better versus, because it would require re-notice of the, sending out re-notices, so that would be more appropriate, for given a January 16 date, versus obeying the item.
All right, Your Honor, if I could continue then. I would like to ask.
Does that mean then?
Well, I would like just simply to ask the maker of the motion to say everything but 88, essentially, that 88 requires a separate motion. And the reason I want to do that is because that will require another notification to neighbors. It's a good thing. And so that, for that reason, I'm on.
Which is not in this vote, because it's obeyed.
No, it's not in this motion.
It wouldn't, excuse me.
So all the items that I have mentioned, excluding item number 88, I have moved to approve. And could we vote on those?
Okay. So please vote on those.
Mayor Protem, you have already requested the items, whether they were to be stricken or obeyed. So I think it was mostly, you're requesting that council follow the direction that you would like these items to go, whether they be stricken or obeyed.
I think he just wants it done separately, isn't that it?
Well, I can make a separate motion, Your Honor.
Okay.
Which would clear it up.
Okay. Please, go ahead, and on Agenda Item, do you want us to, what would you like? Do you want to pull it all back and then take?
Go ahead and pause.
Oh, Councilman Soroka, you haven't voted yet, please.
Are we ready?
We've all voted.
We've all voted.
So, thank you, Your Honor.
All right, now, in reference to Agenda Item 88, do you want to make your comment for the record?
I do, Your Honor. Thank you. Of course, you've ordered that they be posted, so that stands in order. However, I would like to now move that on item 88 in today's agenda, that it be removed from the list of abayed items, and made an item to be tabled until January, and I'm sorry, I don't have the dates of the January meetings, tabling rather than obeying.
But, Madam Mayor, the only. But Madam Mayor, the only thing I don't understand is, this abeyance was requested by the applicant, and are you now saying, instead of that, you would like to make the other? Which comes first, the applicant or the...
Oh, very good point.
Well, the applicant through me had asked for an abeyance, but it, he did not know that the better move for him is to table. That's why this motion's on the floor.
All right. The motion's on the floor, then.
Okay, so...
Because you said he told you that.
So the motion is to table to 116, 2019?
Number 88.
Table it instead of obey it.
Table it to January 16?
Yeah, it's a successing, successor motion, then, on just one of those items.
Does the applicant happen to be here? Okay, let that stand, that the record would show that the applicant has requested that of Councilman Coffin in Ward 3, that it be tabled rather than, uh-huh, or representing the applicant. Can you push the button on, tell us who you are, and that you are representing applicant so-and-so on 88?
Good morning, Madam Mayor. Matthew Cybert of Moran Law Firm, 630 South Forest Street, here on behalf of the applicant in Caldwell. We did request an abeyance. We were actually requesting an abeyance for a considerable amount of time. The applicant, they're just, you know, he has a long-term rent on the property right now. He'd like to kind of see what the city council's going to do in terms of, you know, there's these rumors, these ordinance coming forward, and there's just a lot of uncertainty right now. If our councilman feels that tabling this application would be in the best interest of the applicant and the application, we're fully in support of that.
You do concur with his request.
Yes, absolutely. That is fine. Just as far, just so that I am certain, the only difference would be that we would just have to re-notice the application, correct? That is fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. That way, question, wait, could you turn on your mic?
Mr. Summerfield could clarify for you, Attorney Cybert. Excuse me.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll now move on to Agenda Item 14. Oh, on Number 88, please vote. Sorry, I was reading this myself.
And just for clarity, Madam Mayor, we are voting to table this?
Yes.
Until a time certain of...
January 16, 2019.
So generous.
January 16, 2019.
So it is, okay. Just...
Okay. So please vote and please post. Oh. Thank you for your note. Did you post it in the past? Pardon me, joking. Okay, we will now move on to Agenda Item 15, correct? Okay. No, I'm good. I just was talking to 14. Sorry, I jumped one. Business Item for Possible Action. Any items council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem.
We're on 14, here.
We did that. I thought I did one. Sorry. Reread it. Possible action to approve the final minutes by reference to the August 1st and 15th, 2018 regular city council meetings. Mayor Protem may have a motion to approve the minutes, please.
I move to approve the minutes.
No, I'm good. I shouldn't talk and laugh and do all that at once. There's a motion, please, on Agenda Item 14. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Councilman Soroka? No. Okay. Councilman Soroka, do you want to vote aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, Agenda Items 15 through 47 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and are recommended for approval by their departments. It may be enacted in one motion. Note that a correction must be made on Agenda Item 21, which lists the project as being in Ward 5 with Councilman Creer, but it should also indicate Councilwoman Tarkanian, Ward 1. We need to pull Agenda Item 18 off consent to be trailed until after Item 64, and Councilman Coffin, I understand that you requested Item 19 to be pulled for discussion after we vote on the consent agenda. Are there any other items council wishes to bring forward?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I think we talked about pulling Item 26 forward, just so that we can get on the record of how this process was, how we came to the conclusion of our mender.
And what item was that, please?
Item 26.
Yes. So reference those two items, which will be, we're going to trail them after this vote. Please, that's a motion. And we will hear 26 and then, what does, 18? 18 and 19. Okay, please vote on all other items, and please post. Motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item 18? 19, excuse me. For Possible Action to Approve Award of Bid Number 18 dot 5984 dash DD Baker Park and Pool Reconstruction Located 1100 East St. Louis Avenue to the Lowest Responsive and Responsible bidder in the Construction Conflicts and Contingency Reserve Department of Public Works Award Recommended by Raphael Construction Inc., $7 million 326,300 Parks and Leisure Activities Capital Projects Fund. Note that this item was published indicating Ward 5, however, it is located in Ward 3 with Councilman Coffin. And, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Council. I understand that...
You are.
Oh, I'm sorry. Michael Vlejvich, Public Works Department, 333 North Rancho.
Thank you.
And I'm here representing this, it's unfair to call it a park renovation. It's really a new park in an existing location. And I have some slides that kind of show why I'm saying that.
I didn't know that.
Here we go. This is the park as it currently exists.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Your Honor. If I could ask you, Mike, to make sure you define exactly where it is. It's on St. Louis, near Sahara, you know, near, next to John C. Fremont High School.
Exactly. That's where it is. Thank you. And I should also point out that it's near my former alma mater at its former location, Gorman High School.
Go Gills!
For anybody up there that also is in...
We in the house today.
Yes, this is a park that was originally constructed in 1966, and it has gone through a couple of refreshnings over the years, but it's never been completely redone. So we're really excited to have had the opportunity to have done this completely new transition to this park. One of the major features are the soccer fields. And I'd like to point out that on these soccer fields, we're using for the very first time in one of our city parks, as basically Councilman Coffin has insisted, going to a new generation of infill. All of our synthetic fields to this point have used the pelletized rubber infield. There's been a lot of complaints about that. And again, at Councilman Coffin's insistence, we've investigated and have found some products. And so this will be our very first new generation of the synthetic turf fields.
The point of that, if you could explain, Mike, I'll do it for you if you don't want to, is just simply that the inhaled rubber particles are a potential, if not provable, hazard. So we're trying to find it, because they turn into micro dust after the sunlight and the beating by the spikes. And you found a new product called...
It's, it is a coated sand. And what happens also, in addition to not breaking down into the fine dusts, it also keeps the fields cooler. One of the big issues, of course, in our climate is these fields get very, very hot. And this is a product that's designed to also keep that temperature down.
If I may question you two, I'm assuming these are regulation-sized soccer fields?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Not only are they regulation-sized, but as the graphic that's upright now shows, that they are divisible, divisible for youth leagues play as well. So they're very flexible. But they are full-size, three full-size, lighted with the newest of the LED-type field lighting.
The only reason I'm asking is that I know that when we have the mayor's cup here and the soccer fields, we're always looking for them. They do like the natural turf, which costs parks and recreation a lot more to keep sustainable and usable. But these, for temperature and everything else, they're still, you can use them in the heat of the summer?
They are definitely cooler. Again, they'll still be warmer than your normal natural turf, but certainly a lot cooler than the black rubber that was really heat-attracting and holding that heat.
So we have now three more regulation fields that we can put into that mayor's cup?
Yay.
Three.
Three full?
Yes.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
In addition to those fields, and again, like I said, this is really a new park in an existing location. We're putting brand-new totlot areas for both age groups, the 2 to 5, as well as the 5 to 12. A brand-new park restroom building, new shade pavilions, shelters. We're going to be adding a lot of new planting to supplement what is a valuable asset at that park we're not going to get rid of, and those are the mature trees. Takes a long time to get trees that large.
I just wondered why you cut down all those trees in Ward 1. That were so big.
You should have asked us.
You once, we asked a hundred times.
And what's the timeline on this, please? When we start? When do you hope to finish?
With today's council award of the contract, we anticipate construction could start right around the beginning of November. It's a nine-month project, so it will be completed in midsummer.
No. No. Earlier.
Okay.
Earlier.
Okay. Thank you. Approximation, so that was good. Thank you very much. Thank you. So do you want to make a move to approve on this, then, now?
Well, I don't think he described the rehabilitation of the swimming pool.
Mr. Coffin?
New features. I think that there was a new entrance point for people.
Through the mirror.
The swimming pool, right, the swimming pool is, be, all the equipment that serves that swimming pool is being replaced. The decking is being refurbished. The poolhouse locker room area is going completely into a, again, a refurbish. It's very nice-looking. As a matter of fact, we have a few slides here. Again, it's themed throughout the whole park, beginning with the entry plaza. One of the great features of this park is we have an awesome, I think, in my opinion, and again... Apologies to Councilwoman Mayor Protem Tarkanian, I think this will be the nicest water play feature of any of our parks when it's completed.
I just wanted to know if Councilman Coffin has had the city's arborist check those trees?
Yes, they are, we are looking at those trees. We do know some of them will have to come out, similar to at Baskin Park.
Yes, and it starts with three out, and it ends up with 12 out. I just am warning you.
Diseases are found, yeah?
Yeah, diseases are found. Thank you. That, I'm just joking here. I, you know that for before. Thank you.
Hurry up.
Okay. And again, the fields, the interesting thing about the soccer fields also is we are creating practice walls, as you'll see in the current slide that's up there. Everybody likes to be able to kick a ball against the wall, and oftentimes they use a wall that's not designed for that. For the first time, we have a wall that's designed for that use.
Wonderful.
Again, these are the new restrooms, park restroom, and the refurbished swimming pool locker room area. Graphics all around the park, new graphics. And this concludes...
Fantastic.
Our presentation. So I know you've asked some questions along the way, but certainly if there's any other questions, I can answer.
Thank you very much, Councilman Coffin.
After anybody else.
Beautiful. No, I think we're good.
After anybody else, lowest.
I just want to say that this is where some of our youngsters and adults with special needs, I believe they still use this park, so it'll be wonderful for them, too. I've been to some games that they've had there.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. If I could, Your Honor?
Please.
The thing is, is this park has been here a long time. And of course, there's joint use with the schools, you know, during the school hours. But it really, it works all the time. The thing is, Your Honor, it works so much that we tried and tried a few years ago, well, maybe five or six years ago, to re-turf it, and the turf could not hold. It could not take the heat and the punishment. And so then discussion came up about artificial turf, which I am really against. However, it makes sense. And though I have worried about the health of the rubber-filled, rubber infill for a long time, and so staff found in Los Angeles a pilot program that was going on there with that lighter-colored sand, coated sand, and that, you know, Mike, there's one thing, and I don't want to belay this any further, Mayor, but just one more thing. Since so many, we have so many fields that have artificial infill with rubber, rubber infill. Can that stuff be vacuumed out of there to a great degree? Maybe not all of it, but a vacuuming out of it and a replacement with this kind of a sand infill? Would it work with the turf, the shape of the blades that are in there now?
Certainly some of our parks can, but you're right. It is the shape of the blade in combination with the correct type of infill. So we would have to do, each park would be, have to be analyzed individually to see which of the newer infills are possible for those. We do have a variety over the years since we've been putting these in, as well as replacement of those fibers, or the turf with various fibers. We'd have to be in, assess every project initially.
Thank you. And it took a long time, and I appreciate that effort by the department. I believe six years from start to today, and then nine months to completion, eight months, actually, Mike. I believe the first of June would be an appropriate time, summer, you know. Okay, thank you very much, Your Honor. Now move for approval of Item 19.
There's a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 19. Please vote and please post. Thank you. That motion carries. We'll watch with great excitement.
See you in June.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's go to Agenda Item 26, for Possible Action to Approve Award of Contract 180227-jh, Professional Services Contract for City of Las Vegas Master Plan Department of Planning Award Recommended to Smith Group LLC, $450,000 General Capital Projects Fund. And this is in reference to all wards. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and members of the council. For the record, my name is Edward O'Neill, the Purchasing and Contracts Manager for the city. Accompanying me is Robert Summerfield, the Director of Planning. I will be here to answer any questions you have regarding the contract or the procurement process of this item, but I'm going to turn it over to Robert to give you a brief overview on this particular item, as he's the subject matter expert.
Please, please.
So, Madam Mayor, I do have copies of this very, very brief presentation that staff put together based on yesterday's briefing questions. So real quick, how we got here. So the Nevada Revised Statutes requires under 278 for all municipalities to have a master plan, a comprehensive plan. It is supposed to govern the vision that the community has for going forward, and we're supposed to make decisions that are consistent with that vision for going forward. The current master plan, which is the one that you all have been working under for almost 20 years now, is the 2020 Las Vegas Master Plan. It is 20 years old, and as we all know, the last 20 years have probably seen the greatest amount of growth and disruption and changes and shifts, particularly in our community of anywhere in the country. And so we believe it's time to do a new master plan, and the time really is now to do that. The master plan is required to cover these subject areas. These are the statutory requirements. These are actually reduced from what, thanks to the work of the Office of Administrative Services and your Government Affairs Group, Kelly and team up there, they actually were able to pass a bill a couple sessions ago that reduced this requirement. And so these are the requirements that we're absolutely have to... And so these are the requirements that we absolutely have to cover in a master planning effort. Some recent master planning. So this is, again, consistent with some, again, in the region, in the state. The City of Henderson has just updated their comprehensive plan based on the Southern Nevada Strong Regional Plan that was adopted just a couple years ago. City of Reno just completed Reimagine Reno, a pretty significant new master plan in that area. Again, with a lot of the development that they've seen because of Tesla and Amazon and some of the other activities that have occurred in the north, it was a ripe time for them to update their plan. Plano, Texas, Plano, Texas has actually got a very tremendous new plan that they've done. In fact, we've, in our review of other planning efforts and how they've done it, a lot of the elements that Plano has done are things that we want to look at incorporating in our planning process. Urban, Texas, and then the City of Phoenix, all of these recently, generally in our region, have done master plan updates. So I think one of the big questions was on this particular ward, the recommendation is to the Smith Group. The Smith Group has worked in the City of Las Vegas previously. They delivered the Las Vegas Medical District Plan. Part of the work on that Las Vegas Medical District Plan was what was before the legislature in helping convince them to fund the medical school and place that in the Las Vegas Medical District. So they already have a history with the city and are familiar with a lot of our goals and the vision for specifically downtown, but we think they'll do a great job here in the community. It's a collaborative approach in coming to this recommendation between the Planning Department, the Communications Office, as well as other city departments that participated in review of that. Subconsultants that have been identified and that we're working through with the prime consultants who nail down their contracts. We're looking at Applied Analysis, a local firm, to help with some of the surveying work to get some of the community input. Kinley Horn has been targeted for helping us integrate the Mobility Master Plan that this council has already adopted into this new master planning effort. Carpenter Sellers Delgado is a local architectural firm that is also participating. And then we have some national leaders that are part of this contract. HRNA is a national firm that helps jurisdictions and municipalities as they tackle the question of affordable housing. We know that's a huge issue in our community, and how do we work within the general plan to create, in creative ways, to incentivize affordable housing, particularly as we continue to have the homeless discussion? Affordable housing is really, I think Kathy has talked about this a number of times, Kathy Gibson, about it's, we need somewhere more than the courtyard. We need that affordable housing component, and so they will help us to talk about a strategy to address that. Smart Cities is one of your strategic, Smart Vegas is one of your strategic anchors for the citywide strategic plan. So CitiFi is, again, a national firm that helps identify ways that, on a larger basis than our Innovation District, we might implement some of our smart city initiatives. Applied Storytelling and then Hodge Development are two additional specialty consultants. And that's one thing I want to make very clear here, because I know there was a concern about, well, we have a very good staff here at the City of Las Vegas, and as your planning director, I think we have a tremendous amount of talent within the Planning Department. However, we also have a very diverse interest group on this council and the number of projects that we're working on. And we want to make sure that we balance the master plan effort, which is really expected to be a two-year effort, against all the other projects we are working on at the request of this council and the City Manager's Office. And this, this process that we put in place with this contract really creates that balance between effectively using your staff in the Planning Department while getting specialty expertise from the consulting community. And so just, this is some of the contracted services that are required, public engagement, helping to establish the strategic direction by facilitating some of the workshops amongst stakeholders, some additional services. So this contract is scaled back from what we had initially proposed when the, this was originally funded through the CIP a year or so ago. So we've included some additional services if additional funding is available, or as we get through the visioning process, if this council directs that they want some of these other things tackled, then we have some of these additional services that we can take a look at. Kickoff, so hopefully we're awarding the contract today. Then we will do a project kickoff between here and the end of the year, and then we will, at the start of the year, we will begin that public engagement process to get the visioning exercises, work with the council, work with the Planning Commission, work with a citizens' engagement group, as well as community civic leaders, stakeholders, to really help us develop what that vision for the city looks like over the next 10, 15, 20 years or more. And with that, this is the Plano example that I was telling you about. They actually, just recently, in the last year or so, won the National Planning Award. They've taken this quote here to heart, and this is actually a quote from a planning director, a former predecessor of mine here in the City of Las Vegas, where the comprehensive plan really is not meant to be that plan that sits in a binder on a shelf. It's meant to be dynamic, it's meant to go on, and it's meant to be regularly updated so that it maintains its relevancy for the community. We haven't always done that with our current 2020 plan, but that is our goal going forward with the new plan that we're hoping to develop over the next 18 months or so. With that, any questions on that or?
Were there any bids from Las Vegas companies?
So, Madam Mayor, so as a part of the RFP, we had a number of planning teams. And just like this, the team that we're recommending for the award, there were other teams that had Las Vegas local partners or subcontractors as a part of their team. We find that that happens actually with most of the planning-related contracts that we get. While there may be a firm from a national company that wants to come and help us with developing that plan, they are very responsive to our local market and make sure that they are partnering with people who have the specialty and the history of working in Las Vegas.
And do they submit this, well, this particular company, will they submit to you line items for the local companies? How much is going to be awarded out of the $450,000 to local companies, and if in fact are they meeting our standards of diversity and?
Yeah, I'll let Manager O'Neill address some of that specific on the contract, but yet, we do have a very detailed schedule of who's doing what work for how much for all the various tasks that we included in the scope of work, but.
Thank you.
For the record, Edward O'Neill. Yes, Mayor, the bids that went out, or the RFPs that went out, we suggest them working with all of our community. We give them the opportunity to look over our diverse database, to work with subcontractors for minority, women-owned, and disabled veteran businesses. But the scope of work, those contracts that they are subcontracting out to the seven subcontractors that Robert spoke of earlier, those are still in negotiations with them, but they are estimating about $150,000 of their work to be awarded to those subcontractors. So at least a third of their work will be with the subcontractors.
Okay. And so they will keep you current on those awards, so you have an approximation? Is, how much is going out of that $450,000, let's say, to Applied Analysis and what their role is?
It's not in the contract to do so, but we can request those. We do ask them to keep the records, so we can request that information at any time, and then we can always come back and report that.
Yes, I would absolutely like to hear that going forward, because we really, it's a lot of money. We know that. It's from our citizens, obviously. It's for a plan for us. But the reality, you know, the people who live here are the ones that are doing the business here, and we'd like to see some of those funds stay here. So thank you very much. Any questions, comments?
No, Madam Mayor, thank you. You answered my questions, and Mr. Summerfield, I appreciate it. I appreciate all that you guys have done to get this there.
Thank you. So you want to make a motion on that, please. Oh, wait, one second, please, Mayor Protem.
I just want to ask, we're having this for 30 years. The previous master plan was for 20 years, and things grew so rapidly then. Don't you expect they'll even grow more rapidly in the future? So why did you add 50% more time?
Madam Mayor, through you. So Mayor Protem, that is, that's a number. It sounded really cool to say 2050 plan. Through the visioning process, we will determine the horizon. However, if you recall, when we were doing the downtown master planning process, we had actually planned that one out originally, conceptually, as a 20-year plan max. And through the visioning process and working with the council, that actually got updated to a 30-year plan. So that, please don't get bogged down with the time horizon. That's why I said, looking at 10, 15, 20 to 30 years, so it will all, the horizon, if you would, will get worked out through the visioning process. That's just, it sounds cool to say the 2050 master.
So the edge of the horizon could be a lot sooner than later, and if so, then we adapt.
Yes, ma'am. Exactly.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmen, now your motion, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 27, I move, excuse me, item 26, I move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. That motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to pull forward Agenda Item 49, if that's all right, because I had a deference to Mr. Malaski and team. I'd like to move this item forward. You've been sitting here a long time. So let me read in Agenda Item 49. Administrative Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Approval of a Development Agreement Between the City of Las Vegas and LVMC Development LLC and Affiliate of the Malaski Group of Companies for the Design, Development, and Construction of a New Municipal Courthouse on the Property Bounded by Clark Avenue to the North, East Bonneville Avenue to the South, South First Street to the West, and Transit Station Street to the East. $56,355,035 plus $3 million owner's contingency. City Facilities Capital Fund, Project CPF. This is from Ward 3 with Councilman Coffin. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Tim Hacker, I'm your Chief Public Safety Services Officer. You know, me leading off the presentation today, and we're continuing the theme that you've seen already, is the reinvestment into your community and the priorities, achieving the priorities that you have directed staff to achieve. So this is, of course, a great project and a great day, bringing this project back to you for final approval. A couple of thank-yous as we're here. Mayor, you mentioned the Malaski Group, and of course, Mr. Irwin Malaski is here, and all that he has done and accomplished when it comes to public works projects. Rich Worthington and Matt Connelly, who we've been working very closely with on developing this plan that we're presenting today and this development agreement. Municipal Court Team was led by Chief Judge Cynthia Leong and Judge Bert Brown. Dana Lovick and others have worked tirelessly from preparing the RFP that went out and to the DA that we, or developer agreement that we're bringing back to you. Purchasing Steve Kessler has taken lead in that group and has been wonderful in coordinating and moving this project along. Of course, legal, can't do anything without legal. John Riddella has been a champion in making sure that the interests of this community are protected and that this project is brought to you in an acceptable format. So a little bit of history is always good. Why are we here? Why are we asking for your approval on a, on a building? Well, Clark County District Court needs more space. It's just plain and simple. The RJ, the Regional Justice Center, in its, when it was being contemplated as a joint project, it was contemplated that we would move out at some point in time, and that time has come. On August 15th, you approved the interlocal with Clark County, established the terms of our leaving and vacating the RJC. One of those steps has already been accomplished, that the vacant unused space, so out of that current 70,000, 80,000 square feet of space dedicated to our purposes, we've already vacated that space, and so they're using and enjoying that. The remainder of the space needs to be vacated by July 21st, 2021, and that seems like a long time off, but with the magnitude of this project and the constraints that we're facing, it's not that far off if we're going to meet that deadline. Because if we don't meet that deadline, hopefully you'll recall, there are pretty significant costs associated with that to the City of Las Vegas to stay in that space. So the history really goes back to April, well, goes back further. But this, this history on this project, this specific development agreement, goes back to April of 2018, when you approved the issuance of an RFP, and that RFP established the scope. That scope was developed with our court administrator and those judges and that staff, taking a real hard look at that 70,000 to 80,000 square feet that they enjoy, and what they're going to need today and going well into the future. And so that really established the scope. Received two proposals in May of 16th, American Nevada Company and the Malaski Group of Companies, who were selected because of the value that we felt their proposal provided. August 15th was a busy day. You also established and approved the non-binding term sheet and directed staff to work with Malaski Group towards achieving the agreement of terms, which we're bringing back to you today. You also approved a bond issuance on September 5th that is going to help fund this in addition to the monies that we receive from the county. So the non-binding term sheet really is the response that the Malaski Group provided to us. It shows almost 140,000 square feet, gross square feet, for this facility. Four-story courthouse to be located on nearly an acre kitty-corner to City Hall. Our parking needs are going to be met, both with some on-site basement parking, secure parking for those people that require that, and using our city garage at 500 South Main. The total project cost at that time was established at not to exceed $56.2 million. And the council directed us at that time to look at, how can we look at that scope and work with Malaski to try to trim some of those costs? Because if you recall, a year prior, that's why I talk about the history of this, I'm not going to go all the way back, but the year prior, you had come so close to building a facility and issuing, you know, approval for that, and of course, that was stymied. And so here we are with a little bit of a more cost. We needed to look at that. You also challenged staff to look at, is this, is this scope meeting our current and future needs? And so that was a big part of your, your direction to us going forward, and we took that quite seriously. The development agreement that we're bringing to you today really shows that the city and the court staff worked with the Malaski team to finalize the programming and space needs. And we can get into that level of detail that you desire. However, days, three or four days of, complete days of extensive and exhaustive interaction with the Malaski's design professionals, but most importantly, the court administrator and the judges and the staff were there to really go through that design and that programming. They spent well over three days, countless hours, working on that to bring this plan back to you for approval. At the same time, if you recall, Malaski took to heart what you had said about trimming that $56.2 million. And so they brought back to us a proposal that they, they thought, without changing the scope of the project, they could find a little over $1 million in cost reductions. And so we applaud them for that. And so that established a new not-to-exceed cost of $55.1 million. The scope remained unchanged. We're still looking at a nearly 140,000 square foot, gross square foot building, four-story courthouse with a basement parking established on that one acre of ground. Malaski and our team also identified, and it's back in this proposal, new elements that could help make that building more durable, like a roof, just a roof membrane. What's the cost to upgrade the roof membrane? Well, we have an opportunity to do that. And so we looked at that, and we also looked at adding another secure elevator, which provides so much flexibility going forward in adapting the building and some of those, those spaces that are classrooms and don't house people that are working, that can be quickly altered and adapted to future courthouses if the need be. The project milestones that were shared with you back in August remain, and it's every intent, I was asking Rich and Matt how quickly they could get cranes over there, and there'll be something that looks like a crane potentially in the next few days. So the development agreement terms, we have the land costs, architectural and engineering, construction costs, soft costs, and so the development agreement with Malaski not to exceed costs of $56,355,036. We are asking the council, your administrative team is asking, to also provide a contingency that we hope never to touch, and with Scott Adams leading us and what he was able to do with this building, we plan on turning that back. And of course, in the development agreement, Malaski is looking at ways that if they're, come in under budget, there is an ability for us to share in the savings in coming in under budget. So this agreement really provides, I think, you the best value. It's very thoughtful in recognizing all of the work that has been put into this by the court team, and we hopefully will gain your support today so we can get to work tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. Rich Worthington. For the record, 100 North City Parkway, Suite 17.
Rich Worthington, for the record, 100 North City Parkway, Suite 1700 downtown Las Vegas. You're representing the Malaski Group of Companies on this project. I want to thank the mayor, Mayor Protem, and the rest of the council for the confidence you've placed in our firm in selecting us to take this very important project forward. So we thank you. There was a lot of people that touched this, and I learned a long time ago from Erwin that success has many fathers and failures an orphan. This is truly a case where there's a lot of fathers and mothers involved in the formulation, design, refinement, and programming of this very important facility. We'd like to thank Scott Adams for his, he's been working on this for nearly a decade. John Redilla, who did an amazing job in his support team at the city attorney's office in drafting a first-class development agreement. Nick Niarcos, who served as special counsel to the city, who is always a pleasure to work with and really brings a different perspective to the table, advising the city. And so we applaud his involvement and efforts. Of course, Tim and his leadership in this, Hacker, is also to be thanked and recognized. And Steve Kessler, who really managed a herd of cats on this project for a couple of different times, over a couple of different years. So we really applaud him and his patience and leadership in getting this through purchasing. Jason Thompson, who grinded on us on our price and value and, along with Gary Ameling, you know, encouraged us to find these, requested us to find these $2 million in savings, of which I'm pretty proud to say we got to a million one. But I don't want to be too repetitive. So Gary, Dan, the court administrator, Lavick, is, I didn't torture his name this time, he's been amazing, really working tirelessly on this to make sure, and by the way, including court analysts, data specialists, managers, you know, everybody in his organization to make sure that this lives and breathes and operates like a first-class facility, takes the best of what they had at the RJ, minimizes the worst of what they had over there. And so we really appreciated Dana's input. Mike from Public Works gave us a lot of input on lessons learned on City Hall. And so, Mike, I'm going to torture this. Vladovic?
Layevich.
Okay, Mike knows who he is, and we want to thank him. Chief Justice Leong and Justice Bert Brown were amazing to work with as well, and they deserve, when you're metering out justice, a facility of the stature and the importance and mission of this building. And so we were happy to have their involvement and help. Tremendous number of court staff, analysts, data specialists, departments heads, managers, et cetera. We want to thank our legal counsel, Jeff Zucker, from Fenimore Craig, who worked very hard on the development agreement, representing the developer's side of this. It's a fair agreement, and Jeff is a brilliant legal mind, and we appreciate his contributions towards this. The Malaski Company executives and staff, Matt Connelly is going to build this, he's the project executive in charge of every aspect of this, and he's done millions of square feet of government facilities and public-private partnerships, and he's used to consensus building and managing the things that are important to you, the client, as well as what's important to us, the company. And so we're really proud to have Matt running this. And I also want to just take a moment to thank Mr. Malaski for inspiring us to build or leave our community in a better place than we found it and improve upon the built environment. You know, I've been with the company 29 years this November, and every time I think I've learned everything there is to learn from Erwin, he teaches me a new lesson. But he inspires us, and he inspires us all at the company to do our best. And so I thank him for inspiring us to chase this project, which is in the community where we live and raise our families. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And one more thing before you go too far, and I do really want to thank our city manager, because I know this has been a pursuit of love.
Ten, ten years, I think, in the making.
Yeah, no, I mean, unbelievable with the ups and downs in our community and the resilience and result focus. But we had asked him, and I know at the last meeting, Councilman Coffin had brought up something which we continued to address with Scott Adams, but maybe you could respond to it here in the public venue. Knowing that this town's going to grow, we are going to be well over 3 million down here easily, probably within the next five to eight years. And so with that comes more crime, more problems, and knowing we tend to need to always look at that growth. What is in, and I think Councilman Coffin, and have me correct, please correct me, but talked about building a shell up, or one of your companies said it, you could build a shell fifth floor. What do you see about addressing the growth with this plan?
Well, the entire project team, and I'm talking about the justices to Dana, to Public Works, to Gary, the money man, to the city leadership, took his remarks to heart. And we went back and we looked at the design, and there's incorporated more flexibility in the design of the interior space to allow training rooms and meeting rooms to be converted to courtrooms, which we previously had not had in the plan. And so I applaud Councilman Coffin's remarks, because it really motivated the entire team to rethink the design of the interior of the building. Did we get a fifth floor in the building that he really wanted, and, you know, we would be happy to build and we thought was a good idea? No, because the cost, when we made the changes and evaluated that in the, with the sub-community, it was extraordinary. I mean, it came in a lot higher than even I expected. And the reason why is it's not just as simple as adding a shell on the building. You're adding, you know, more intense and robust mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems to the building. You are adding a floor to all the different elevators in the building. You're adding, you know, more to the foundation. So what I thought was going to be a manageable number came back to be quite an expensive number. We went as far as suggesting that we would cut our fees and profit on the additional floor, trying to stretch to help the city get to their goals, and it still didn't work. I mean, it still turned out to be a number that was too much to swallow fiscally. And I admire the city for their fiscal responsibility, because you have a lot on your plate, and you do a lot of neat things. But the whole entire team was disappointed at the extraordinary cost. But it did motivate everyone to focus on building flexibility into the design, such that it will be easier to fortify some of the training rooms and create additional courtrooms.
Wonderful. Thank you. Because I really, I thought it was a grand idea, and unfortunately, we did get the report back. Councilman, did you want to add something?
Well, we're having a national alert now. I think it's safe, but it might get kind of noisy in here.
Flood alert or national alert?
This is the national alert, testing all cell phones, everything.
Oh, wow.
No action needed. However, as long as we are not too noisy here, Rich, the issue is, of course, the mayor also wanted the fifth floor, at least the concept discussed, so there's two of us up here. But I really have lived here so long that I have seen the failure in public construction probably no more evident than the construction of the Regional Justice Center, where the county undertook to create, and of course, with the help of the city and the state, the new RJC, which we have down just next to us practically. And they originally planned for a couple of towers, originally, the concept, thanks to the city manager and his life history here. But they changed their minds and they went down to one, and then the building that was built has been a joke in the construction community here for many years, because, in fact, they were so distrustful of the, I don't know, the contractor or somebody, that they actually fired somebody and brought in Randy Walker from the airport.
I recall that, sir.
They brought him in to put out the fire. But the point is, the fire never really went out, and the commissioners should have recognized, we all probably should have recognized, that they, if they had spent a little more money at the time, bonding, of course, which reduces your cash outflow considerably, you would then have had a courthouse, a regional justice center, which we would not even be talking about leaving. And we might still be talking about filling, but we sure wouldn't be working with the county to leave their burden, because they need space, and thinking about building our own building. Now, as I saw numbers yesterday, which for the first time I saw, a $10 million number, and that's, nobody's going to hold anybody to that number down to the decimal, please. It's just the idea that out of that kind of a project, maybe that's high, maybe that's low. But why not think ahead? Because as the mayor has said, we have to look ahead. I really believe we need to look more than 20 and more than 30 years down the road. We've got to look at that space of land being useful for 50 to 80 years, because this town's not going away. The country still allows people to move without notice to wherever they want, and we can't help it, we're a nice place to live. So we're going to have more population, I think even higher than the mayor thinks, because we have enough water, frankly, to last many, many more millions for domestic use. So think about that, as we use less.
Yes.
For persons. So the whole idea is, don't shoot short, and then end up, I'll be gone by the time people are cussing me out, but there will be people who say, well, why didn't they do it right the first time, when it would have cost a lot less?
Well, Councilman, I could be wrong, and I defer to Dana, but the facility that's before you now is designed for projected capacity for the next 50 years based on population. And while it'd be nice to have the money and spend the money to build a facility that will last 100 years, it's pretty hard to project much beyond that because of the changes in the court system and technology and, you know, the various ways that people could be adjudicated in the municipal court system. So I'll defer to them.
Maybe the future will change. Maybe people won't be tough on crime in legislatures. Maybe judges will not be elected, but right now, in the future, they will be. And tough on crime, because they are elected officials, all of that stuff spirals into more inmates until that changes. And I don't see it coming, until that changes. We can't know.
And gratitude make the motion.
Did you have one more thing? Did you, where are your projections that show in 50 years you'd still be okay? Because we need to have those, and I know we've talked.
I'll defer to Dana on that.
Just, I want to move it along, Dana, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Councilman Coffin, looking out to the best projections we had from EUD takes us to 2040. That shows approximately a 37% population increase. Our existing space in the RJC would have allowed us to add two additional courtrooms. The current configuration in this building allows us to ultimately bill out, build out an additional three courtrooms with no impact on staff whatsoever. We simply reconfigure training rooms or meeting rooms. Most of those training rooms are actually going online as our technological push goes. So there will be no change to our operations whatsoever to accommodate all of that growth, assuming straight-line correlation to caseloads to population growth. The reality is that nationally, that trend has not been shown.
What if we agree? I'm sorry, Dana, if I could, sorry to interrupt you for speed here. I'd still like to see those projections, and we'd like to put them to a little stress test, because we've got some wonderful analysts here in this valley, and I think some of them differ with you on that projection. But I give it back to you, Mayor, thanks for letting me talk. I will vote to approve. I just want to make sure we, before you actually break ground or finish finally, the design of the substructure, which you need for an additional four, please, you know, give us a little time, a few weeks maybe.
No, 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 no. Results-oriented, our city manager, would you please make your comment, please?
Yeah, let me just weigh in too. I feel compelled to make two comments for the record. There's one person that isn't here that I also want to thank, and that's Orlando Sanchez, because he kind of brought it up to a certain point.
Right, yes, he did.
And handed off to our team, and, you know, I know he's not here, he's retired, but he did a lot to help get us to where we're at. There's two points I wanted to make for the record. One is on the issue of expansion. As I'm told by our team, we have the ability, with some changes in the building, to double the number of courtrooms in this building. Now, if crime stays proportionate to population growth, and I think, Councilman, you raised that issue, but if, we have to assume it will at this point. You've made public safety your number-one priority. We'll stay hard on that issue to keep crime proportionate to population growth. That would mean our city population would have to be 1.3 million people, the region's population be 4.8 million people before we run out of space in this courthouse. So I believe that we've built, we're building a courthouse that meets the long-term needs of the city. If that happens, we got bigger fish to fry with this building than we do the courthouse. We're going to be building another city hall before we're even worried about courthouses. Second is on the issue of costs. I really wanted to get this on the record for our citizens. Malaski is using construction manager at risk, and I've been a big believer, the two biggest facilities we've built in the last decade, this building and the one across the railroad tracks, the Smith Center, were all built with construction manager at risk. And the way that works is the construction company is engaged with the design firm during design development, so that when they make their maximum bid, there's no change orders on the back end of the project. Because of that, we brought the Smith Center and this building in under budget, and I believe we're going to bring this project in under budget as well. So I had to make those comments, because I think part of this is being responsible fiscally in terms of looking at the long-term needs of the city and building a facility that's reasonable in terms of those long-term needs, but at the same time, being fiscally responsible as we develop and build the building, so that we can bring the building in on time, under budget, and meet the schedule that we have to. The time pressure is going to be on. We've got to get out of the RJC, and literally, I hope in six to seven months, there's going to be steel coming out of the ground across the street.
Yeah.
Because we're going to have to do that in order to get out of the RJC in time to deliver the space to the county.
Thank you, and thank you for your part in Orlando. If you're listening, thank you for carrying this for so.
Good for you.
And then, Councilman, Chris.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. I just want to reiterate, I know when this first came about, we talked about having our minority participation for this on the construction side also as we move forward with employees to represent the building with veterans, DBEs, MBEs, women-owned businesses. So, and I know that the city manager reiterated the fact that this particular building was built, was it 23%? 28% minority participation, or?
Yes, it was. We, at the final, at the end of the day, I believe it's right around 23%. It was at least 20%. And I think, as I mentioned previously, that was due to the definition of including vendor suppliers, sub tiers on top of subcontractors and contractors. So the dollar value of content of this building was over 20% MBE.
Okay. Well, it's, obviously, that's our goal moving forward, and I look forward to working with you to ensure that we have that participation.
Thank you. And Mr. Hablak and Chief Justice, I just must tell you, thank you so much. I know so many of our judges have been dreaming about this time, and never thought it would really happen. So this has really been something fabulous. And because you're in Ward Three, I'm going to turn it back to Councilman Coffin, unless anyone else would like, yes, Mayor Protem.
Mayor, through you, I just wanted to say that I'm really pleased, Erwin, that your Malaski Group is going to be building this, because everything I've seen that you've built for the city has just been absolutely excellent. And I also want to thank you personally for all the support you gave to Runnin' Rebels and to my husband. I want to thank you, and I'm just very, very pleased it's Malaski Group that's going to be doing this, because I know it's going to be absolutely excellent. Thank you.
And Councilman Soroka.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just want to chip in on the conversation. We were very excited. We're all optimistic about the growth of our great city of Las Vegas, and we were concerned about that top floor. But something that came to light in our briefings yesterday, just to reiterate, is that we learned that it would be cheaper to build a wing on the side in the future than it would be to build on a top, another floor on the top floor. So that was a good note of comfort, to know that we have that option in the future, and that the excellent team has kind of accommodated that potential use in the future. And I just wanted to shout out further that I did have the opportunity to sit in a meeting with our city manager, Rich Worthington, and Martin Harris, and we were very frank about our use of small disabled minority businesses, and they were very encouraging in their acceptance and willingness to work, in fact, engage aggressively to bring those small businesses in, and that was very, very positive. And everything about the discussion, all Scots, very difficult questions, they handled with ease and with a willingness to work with us. So I was very optimistic about what we're doing here. So thank you for what you're doing, and look forward to a great facility that you build for us. Thank you.
And with that, then, I am going to turn it back to Councilman Coffin, because it's in your ward, you lucky man.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you very much. And yes, it's a pleasure. It's something for future generations, I think. Unfortunately, if you happen to come into one of these things, well, you get out. That just takes time. What would life be without some experience in jail? I have to say that this team... I have to say that this team is respected in town, and I've known the principal, well, the patriarch of the group, truly, Mr. Malaski, as we used to call him when I was a kid, when I caddied at Desert Inn, but he doesn't remember.
He's waving.
And he's waving. Erwin Malaski, thank you, I guess in a way sentimentally, this is for you, because you've earned it, and I know you're going to keep the lid on these costs. You're going to tell the kids, watch out, because this is important for all of us. And so for that, we really thank you. And by the way, a conversation about DBE or disabled, I mean, sorry, disadvantaged people or minorities, that comes up in this kind of situation as a, almost like an ask, but it's a strong one. And the reason is, is because under construction manager at risk, CMAR, you don't tell who you, you don't tell your general contractor who you select as all those subcontractors, which is where most of the minority community is. So that is why we're talking about this. It's an obligation on the part of the contractor to do it now. But on the other hand, the law does not require it, and it's a great cost saver too. So for that, with that in mind, I now move for approval of item 49.
Thank you, there's a motion, please vote and please post. And we are just so grateful and so excited. Let's get those shovels and the hats and let's go. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Malaski. Thank you, Rich, everybody, and thank you, our judges, for all the work, and thank you, city team. Appreciate it. All right, we will now go, I'm so sorry, on Agenda Item 48, but there were so many here on that waiting so long as well. Agenda Item 48, Public Hearing to Determine the Advizability of Granting a Telecommunication Service Franchise to MCI Metro Access Transmission Services Corp., pursuant to the purpose, character, term, time, and conditions of the proposed franchise agreement. Reference to all wards. It's a public hearing which I declare open. And first, we will hear from.
Veneta Alpr, Director of Finance. Again, this is a public hearing to grant a franchise agreement to MCI Access Transmission Corporation, permitting them to use the city's right-of-way to, for the installation, operation, and maintenance of approximately 150 miles of fiber that will provide telecommunications services within the city of Las Vegas. And this franchise agreement is consistent with other franchise agreements.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to make comment before I turn it to counsel? Hearing none, I'm going to close public comment. And anyone from City Council comment? Hearing nothing, then I will entertain, or I will make a motion to, no motion, it's a report only? Okay. It's public hearing only, no motions required. So we'll move on to Agenda Item 50.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I could just change the focus for about 30 seconds. It occurs to me that we were just talking about telecom here and other things that relate to electronics. So I got a signal of 10, 15 minutes ago from federal government. I just am curious, it just be, it buzzed, because that's all I was set for. Did anybody not, in this room of 50 or 60 people, get that response? Because we need to report that if we didn't, if you, look at your cell phone. If you did not get it, raise your hand.
There's one.
Now, there's more.
Two, three, four.
And Councilwoman Fury.
All right, so what are you going to tell them what to do then? What are they to do?
Let us know. Please send an email to the city. We will forward this to the appropriate people in the federal government, so they know that it isn't perfect. But they need to know where there might be scattered outages. And also, tell them the way you get your message, if it's through Sprint or some other carrier where you get your email.
Mr. Adams, to what email would you like them to send rather than just send them to a whole bunch of different ones? To sell them in? What number? What email? Mike Sherwood?
Scott Adams, City Manager. I think you could send them to the manager's office. I think at this point, we would probably be having our emergency management function deal with that issue to make sure that we have proper communication to us and amongst us for major emergencies. So I would.
Would you rather have them sent to Mr. Hacker or just to the city manager?
Yeah, okay. Tim's volunteering up his email address, thacker@lasvegasnevada.gov.
T Hacker, H-A-C-K-E-R, at lasvegasnevada.gov. So you'll have a nice week with all these. But anyway, please make sure you do it. It's very important that everybody gets the federal alert.
There we are, and government in action, stuff runs downhill, and it landed with Hacker. But I meant that message for everybody out here who might be watching on TV and their friends. Also, note your location. So in the case of people here in the city hall, maybe their cell service did not work here, but it worked someplace else outside. So things like that will really help the government. Thank you.
Okay, and I mentioned we are on to 50, but it's been stricken. So we're on to Agenda Item 51. Discussion for Possible Action Regarding Acceptance of a Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Safer Grant Award of $2,297,185 from the United States Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency. Grant Programs Directorate for Positions to Allow Full Staffing of Fire Station 103 Located in 190 Upland Boulevard and the Related Augmentation of $620,860 to the Fiscal Year 2019. General Budget of $155,215. City Match Required for Fiscal Year 19. And this is in Ward One with Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Good morning, Mayor.
Morning.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman, members of the council, I'm Willie McDonald, I'm the city's fire chief. Item 51, to accept Federal Emergency Management Agency Grant of $2.3 million. Staff applied for this grant earlier this year to staff New Engine 103 at Jones and Upland. We were awarded a three-year grant which reimburses staffing costs. For the first two years, it's 75 percent of the cost to the city, and at the third year, it would be 35 percent. The grant will assist the city in staffing the new resource in a very densely populated and mature part of the community. Our responsibility would be to maintain the positions for the life of the grant for that three-year period. And staff will hire the 13 new firefighters in the winter academy, and then the engine would be ready to be going, to go into service at the beginning of July 2019. That's really all the information. Happy to answer any questions that any councilman may have.
Well, I'm going to turn it. Nobody is seemingly about to make comments. So Mayor Protem, this is in your ward anyway, so aren't you lucky?
In this situation, I'm very lucky. And very happy and very pleased for our firefighters. And it is something that we need and something that we promised, and I, I'm very, very appreciative that we got it. So I move to approve item number 51.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 51. Please vote and please post. And thank you, Chief McDonald.
Thank you.
And that passes. Thank you. We will now move on to Agenda Item Number 52. Discussion for Possible Action, the Ratification of Shannon Nordstrom as Hearing Commissioner for the Las Vegas Municipal Court, $105,000 Plus Benefits General Fund. And good morning again.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, and Mayor Protem, council members. My name is Dana Levack, Court Administrator for the Las Vegas Municipal Court.
That's fun.
Got another decade or so, we'll get it right. It's my privilege today to present Ms. Shannon Nordstrom for you for ratification as the full-time hearing commissioner for the Las Vegas Municipal Court. She's here today with her husband, Jeff Gurney, and her mother, Clarinda Mason. She's been a practicing attorney for almost 20 years. We were fortunate enough to have her join our staff of alternate judges approximately a year and a half ago. She was one of the many applicants for the position, and after an extensive background checking with staff, attorneys, defendants, she's eminently qualified. Everybody believes in her ethics, her work ethic, her professionalism. We believe she would be a great addition to the municipal court team in the city of Las Vegas, and we would ask for your ratification of her as the full-time hearing commissioner.
Thank you. Is there anything you'd like to say? And I, I'm sure I can say you don't own Nordstrom's.
I don't.
But we do appreciate your husband. Because it would be you who owns Nordstrom, maybe. So we thank you for your service, taking care of us all. But this is exciting.
I would like to say that I am honored to be here. I have very much enjoyed serving as an alternate judge, learning about our specialty courts, covering in them from time to time. They're just so amazing. I'm really happy to be here, and I look forward hopefully to this next chapter in serving our community in this capacity.
Thank you, and I'd like to call down our chief judge, Leong. Do you like knowing you? I know we can always count on you for the extra comment that's perfect. You do so much for us and appreciate it.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and city council members. We've had the pleasure and the privilege of working with Ms. Nordstrom when she became an alternate judge for us. And her dedication, her professionalism was outstanding. And so when she expressed an interest in what else could she do with the court, we had this position open up. And as Mr. Levack has explained, there were many, many qualified applicants. But I think our community is well-served with her experience, her professionalism, and her compassion to the community.
Thank you very much. We just look forward to this. So Mayor Protem, how about a motion, please?
I move to approve.
Nope, button. There we go.
Excuse me. I move to approve.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve this. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Congratulations. Welcome to the family. Very nice. Thank you. Okay, Agenda Item 53 has been stricken. Agenda Item 54 is planning. And whoops, report, this is a report by the planning staff regarding the status update of the conditions of approval imposed upon privileged licenses. L13-00005 nonprofit club liquor. L28-00007 banquet facility liquor. CO801275 amusement machines and B23-00077 banquet facility for Elks Lodge Number 1508 IBPOE of W Inc., DBA Elks Peron Lodge Number 1508 at 600 West Owens, Ward Five. Councilman Creer.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. Mary McLahone, Deputy Planning Director. So at the September 5 city council meeting, staff was asked to come back to this meeting to provide a status update on the progress made by the Elks Peron Lodge of the 20 conditions that were imposed by city council on September 5. I'm here to report that unfortunately, they were not as far along as they had stated to city council on September 5. At that meeting, they had stated to all of us that they were ready to go, they had the security plan that they had been working on, the lighting and the surveillance. We did receive the documentation for the security plan. That was not received by us until 5:30 PM last Friday evening on September 28. Our staff should finish reviewing that today, and we are working with Mr. Barber to try to set the meeting either late today or tomorrow, because there were some issues with that security plan, just to iron those out. So they are off to a good start, but they're missing some important information. Some of the things that are missing in the security plan were some of the 20 items that were given to them as conditions on their license. So they were told that they had to have a number of security guards to a number, and we wanted them stationed outside and also at the door. That's missing from the security plan. That's item number seven, as far as the conditions are concerned. We also need to know the process that the security is going to take to monitor and control the loitering that is in that parking lot. That is condition number four. Also need to know how they're going to secure that west entrance, so it can be used as emergency exit, and that was item number nine. And we need some further information to identify the bankrupt procedures, which is items number 11 and 12. Those are some of the major items. Again, we might have a few more minor ones to discuss with them. But one of the things that was noted in the documentation that was sent to us was that the security company that they had selected was not yet licensed. In the documentation, it had indicated that they were waiting on the city of Las Vegas Business Licensing Division to give MSI that license. We had discussed with Mr. Barber on September 11, and again on Friday, the 28, that that security company was not licensed with the city of Las Vegas, but they had also not even submitted online. I'm happy to say here, though, that they did finally apply with us at 1 PM yesterday afternoon. It's a simple license, it's just a general license. Once they pay the licensing fee, they should be able to receive that license. And that was condition number six on listed conditions. As far as the surveillance and lighting improvements are concerned, as they had stated to us at city council, they were ready to go on that. We did a nighttime inspection on Friday, the 7, which was two days after the city council meeting. The surveillance cameras we found were in the same state of uncleanliness. The bird poop on the lenses that Metro had asked them to remove last November was actually still there. And the lighting had not been upgraded or touched either. So our license officers went over the expectations and the conditions that were imposed upon them. So last Wednesday, the 26, our staff had contacted the Elks Peron Lodge, asked them where the security plan was, because we still hadn't received it. And also, we were scheduled to go out that Friday evening, the 28, to do a routine inspection and had wanted to put them on the inspection list to check the lighting and surveillance. What we found out was that they had ordered some new lights, and they had not been in yet. And in talking with them yesterday, those lights have now been installed, and the surveillance cameras have now been cleaned up. So we have a lighting and surveillance inspection scheduled this Friday, October 5, at 8 o'clock. And that is in reference to condition number four that was imposed on the license. One of the items that we wanted to discuss with them is item number 10. That's a condition in which members are allowed to be there, and they can only have four guests. Well, since last city council, September 5, we learned that the Elks were issuing in the past temporary membership cards, known as green cards. These are $20 membership cards, and they're good for six months. Based upon the bylaws that the city of Las Vegas had received, that was in their file, and discussions that had taken place prior to September 5, we did not realize that this was something that they were doing, that this membership process was never identified. So we feel that they should be following the bylaws and the information that was previously provided to us before the September 5 city council. So they should be following the procedures that are in the bylaws, that are on file with us, that a member must apply and actually be voted in, and that those green cards should not be allowed. On a very positive note, they now have seven key employees that have come forward. So that was a big issue that we had with them, that they didn't have enough key employees. So that should be a positive thing. So they are definitely moving forward towards meeting the 20 conditions, but they're not quite there yet. We're still working with them. We don't feel they've met substantial compliance, but they definitely are moving forward. So hopefully, in the next few days, they'll clean up the security plan, and that lighting and surveillance inspection on Friday night will go well for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Had they, the green cards, had they already issued the next round of green cards, and are they then retrieving them?
Mayor Goodman, I'm not sure. We need to have that conversation with them. What happened was, is when the lodge was closed, we had received some complaints, because people had paid $20 for these membership cards, and now the lodge was closed and they wanted their money back. Of course, that's a civil matter, and the city's not going to be involved in that. So that's how that, that came to our attention. We talked to Mr. Barber, because we were not familiar with that. He talked to us, he said that that was allowed in the grand Elks Lodge bylaws. He did bring us a copy of those bylaws on Monday, but that procedure was unknown to us. And because we have an issue here with easy public access, where this is a membership club only, we do have some concerns with the ease of being able to, someone pays $20, here's a green card, and now you're a member and you are allowed access.
Thank you. Thank you for this. Councilman Creer, a question to you before, and I am sure there may be some other questions, but then I'm going to turn it to you. Had you put a deadline on compliance of all these items so they'd be opened, or is it open-ended?
No, it was not a deadline. It was, look, when you're ready and you pass inspection, you can open. You know, my philosophy was, if you were ready that day, and you had compliance to all of the different items, and you were, you could open for all I care. So, no. to all of the different items and you were, you could open for all I care. So no, we'll be here.
Okay.
God willing. And one of the comments that I have is that, two things. It doesn't instill a lot of confidence in me, and I would have to imagine to the rest of the council, that we hire a security company to do security in the City of Las Vegas, or even the county, for instance, and they don't have a business license. So I'm trying to understand, we have a company that is, doesn't have a license, but they're doing security in our city. I know that they do have a state license, but they do not have a City of Las Vegas business license. So how are they operating? If they're operating without a business license, that means they're breaking the city ordinance. And so we're hiring a company that is supposed to be securing us, or securing the lodge, and here they are breaking the law right off the get-go.
Well, Councilman Krier, the only comment I can make to that is that on September 28th, our staff made the extra, took the extra task of contacting Clark County. And they are located in Clark County. That's where their physical business is located, on Desert In Road. And they had recently applied for a Clark County business license. As of last Friday, they still haven't received it. That was pending. And of course, they had just recently, yesterday at 1:00, applied for a license with us. We don't consider them right now to be out of compliance in the city because they're not, while they're working on a contract with the Elks Peran Lodge, they officially are not providing those services. But they cannot open without that security company being licensed in the City of Las Vegas, and we're not aware of any other services that they're actually providing in the city limits.
Okay. But they are a licensed and bonded security company?
Yes, that is correct. They are a licensed and bonded security company. They're licensed through the State of Nevada, and they did provide to us their private investigator licensing board license. So, and I don't know how familiar, how new a company they are.
Okay. You know, I'm not here to judge a security company for the most part, but we'll get through it, I would imagine. The green cards, I do have an issue with, and I concur with you on that. One of the biggest issues that I have felt that the lodge has faced is the fact that they have let so many people into that lodge that are not members of the lodge, and I believe those are the ones that are causing all the issues that they've had. And it's not necessarily the lodge, you know, the true members. And so I would be in concurrence with you on, in terms of the green cards. That's it, I believe. I look forward to opening up, whatever that may be.
Okay, what I'd like to do, and I, yes, Councilman Anthony, yep.
So if I understand this, Mary, when they meet all the conditions, then you have the authority to open them up, and then you would just let us know that they're open, correct? You don't need to come back to us for approval to open them up?
That is correct. The direction that we were giving at the last City Council meeting was they had to meet all 20 of those conditions, and that once they met those, to the satisfaction of the Business Licensing Planning Department, Business Licensing Division Planning Department, that they would be allowed to open.
So of the 20 conditions, how many of, have they, are they not in compliance as of your report today?
Well, some of those conditions are operational. And because they're not operational, it's hard to know where they will be at when those incidences take place. I would say right now, there's probably about 12 items that they should have had in that security plan, and we probably are missing probably about half of those items. And most of those things can easily be put into the security plan. The real test is going to come when they open up, and they actually have to implement what's in that security plan and those other conditions that are on the license. Some of those conditions are, if there's an incident, they have to contact Metro. Or if there's a call for service, then they have to notify business licensing. So some of those, we won't know until they actually happen.
Okay, I understand. Okay, thank you.
And are you, Councilman Anthony, are you of interest to, one, have another report or to be notified that they're operative? What would be your pleasure to pass on to Councilman Krier?
No, I mean, as far as I can see, you're on top of it. You gave us a report today. Unless Councilman Krier wants another report, I would just like to be notified that they are open.
Yeah.
So, and then kind of a progress report. I don't, I mean, I'll let Councilman Krier handle whether he wants it here administratively, but just a progress report and how things are going after they open. I'll leave it up to you, how you want to handle that.
So in some way, shape, or fashion, you can maybe just send an email out to say, hey, they are in compliance, they're open to the council, so they will know. And then I don't know if we put a review on there for a six-months review or one-year review when we approve them with the conditions or not. I don't think so. We should. I don't know if we can now, but I mean, we can do that really internally to let us know what's going on.
Councilman Krier, we didn't make that request at the last City Council meeting, but we can always come back to you with additional information, and we can always put an item on the agenda to provide you all with another report.
Okay. And also, I just want to, you know, to thank my colleagues on the council. You know, I believe that the council has been very patient and has been very willing to, and staff, to see this organization continue to open. And hopefully, they will get open soon, and they will be in compliance, and we won't have this conversation again.
And Councilman Krier, I should also mention that condition number 18 does state that the director may place the license on the next available agenda for City Council. And it does say disciplinary action, but of course, you could do whatever action you want if we have any violations of the conditions or any of the other regulations that could, ordinances that could be violated.
Well, and two, I would like to add to it, just for consideration there, Councilman Krier, as the process goes forward in deference to law enforcement that really were recommending denial of it, and we moved against that. A report in whatever would be considered reasonable time after they open. Hopefully, there'll be no more incidents, but should there be that there is some notification to you, because you had been very firm that if there's any failure to comply. So how that works, obviously, and I think we'd all be comfortable if Councilman Krier were to touchstone on that.
Yes, thank you. So we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Agenda Items 55 and 56 have been withdrawn without prejudice, and so we're to 57. Whoops. Resolutions, R-532018, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding Resolution to Adopt an Updated Version of Las Vegas City Council Code of Conduct, All Wards. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman.
Yep, still morning, two minutes.
That's what I, I was watching, I was checking my watch to make sure. For the record, Ted Oliva is Chief of Staff. The item before you is a resolution to adopt an updated version of a council code of conduct. Let me give you a little bit of background. One of the things that my department is responsible for is citywide policies and procedures. And so as a part of that, we look at some of the things that we've done in the past every five years, at least. So we're going through some stuff, and up comes the code of conduct. So we looked at that, and it was last approved in October of 2013, so five years ago this month. It had some references into our old values, and we said, gee, we ought to update that and kind of make it generic. And that's why I'm here today. So this item is intended...
But I ask you, was there a code of conduct before 2013, and what was it called if there was? Because I asked my husband during his 12 years, and he said, I don't recall any.
I thought there was, Mayor Goodman, and I'll have to get back to you on that. There was something, but I'll certainly follow up with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I just might, I think there was, because I remember there was a no eating and that Lauren Swickley sat next to me and ate.
And that's why we spilled, let me drop.
So I remember the time just because of that.
Okay, okay.
So we did have one previous.
Because I do really feel, and I'm not sure as you go through the updating, but I would really request that we look at other councils and government bodies and what they have in there. Because I know we have issues of sort of general protocol as to how we treat each other in the different wards, and that we, you know, if you, I know for myself, before I even go or act in a particular ward on something, I will always email them or call the office and say, this information's on my desk, and/or recommend the individual who's contacted me first to go to the councilperson. I will not get involved until that's done. So there's a protocol that I know Brad Jerbic, our lead attorney, has been involved in always don't do business in somebody else's ward without that, and mayor included, really, to be very specific and professional how we go about it.
Right. Thank you, Mayor.
And Mayor, through you, I just wanted to say, the other thing is, sometimes you have things going in a ward that another, I mean, this happened a couple of times with me, and it wasn't a big thing, but they may not, the person from another ward may not understand where you are, what you're doing, who the players are. So if you just contact each other and communicate, that's the key, communication.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
So I love this.
So this was never intended to be all-inclusive. Luann reminds me, she just gave me an update from 2005, so this goes back to 2005. So you're right, Mayor Protem. So thank you, Luann, for that. So the intent is that it's just a guide. This is common practice. This isn't like unique to the City of Las Vegas. It's developed to assist you in serving in your capacity. And generally speaking, the document just talks about things that you should do, perform duties in accordance with the rules of order, fully participate, serve as a model, be respectful, maintain order, and those kind of things. The only, the only two changes to this document from what we did five years ago was on the introduction, where it talks about the city's core purpose and values. Previously, we spelled that out as action. Now, you know that our values can change over time, so we said, let's make it generic so that this can continue to go on as long as you feel appropriate. The second change to the document is on the second page of the conduct, on the very top, we added a provision that just says refrain from making representation outside council meetings, that their position is a position of the City Council as a whole unless acted upon and approved by the City Council. So you can't say that, yes, we, this is our position, when really, it's your own position. So that was just clarified in the document. So that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Fine, thank you. And I do hope it is, you know, an always-changing and current document that really responds to the needs of professionalism and a loftier look at what we're doing.
Yes, thank you. I know we discussed this yesterday, and Karen, thank you so much for bringing me, you had recommended a piece of language, and I might be looking at the old one, but were we able to put that piece of language in?
Your Honor, if I might, Karen Dettleston, for the record. I believe you asked, was, the discussion was concerning appropriate communications and the language that we would suggest adding a bullet if the council wants to consider. Respect and maintain appropriate communications between and among council members' offices.
Yeah. Can we do it? So can you amend it and add that?
Absolutely. Mayor Goodman, through you. So yes, and for the record, it was respect and maintain appropriate communications between and among council members and offices. So all I would have to do is add a bullet point to the document, and that will be the official document.
Wonderful. Thank you. So Mayor Protem, do you want to make a motion to accept that, please? Oh, yes, Councilman Coffin would like to make a comment first.
Okay, I appreciate the fact that it's, it was found under a bunch of dust, and it's five years old. So this was brought up because we just bring things up after five years if they haven't been visited. I guess I couldn't recall it until I found the one from 2013. So it's harmless. I mean, it's like pabulum. On the other hand, I suppose it's good, common sense, and courteous. For example, no eating at the rostrum like the mayor is doing now. I noticed that with the corner of my eye. I see her eating. That's in there, and I eat all the time, and I can't help it. So there will be some breaches of decorum every now and then, and I won't be able to help that, Ted. But, you know, if you can help me, I would appreciate it very much. Mary would make a good breakfast for me. I would definitely not have to eat in the morning.
I'd be glad to help.
She's watching this broadcast, so there will be health pay.
They know I choke all the time because it's the popcorn that keeps me going. But anyway, I think it's wonderful, and it's a document that hopefully we keep reviewing and do something with. So Mayor Protem.
First, I would like to add that when we received the first document, I don't believe the council members realized that they could put in the input. And I know a couple of them were a little stiff on a couple of items. So this is good that we're bringing it around to where the members of the council can make additions or changes or things like that because it's them doing, their self-monitoring. I would like to move to approve item R-532018.
Thank you, and that's your motion?
That's it.
Thank you. And just, some days, please vote and please post, pardon? As amended.
As amended.
That sometimes we don't take breaks for lunch, so just know that's why we tend to nibble our way through the day.
Mayor, when that came up, when that came up in our group, I said, we really have no time to eat. We have to eat out there.
No, we don't. You just go right on. And we've been doing that. I think last time, or, well, certainly during some of the more contentious items, we've been here from the RDA meeting at 8:30, and we'll still be here at 6:00, 7:00, 8:00 at night, so. But I'm getting better on recesses, and I know the council approves that. So anyway, that motion passed, and we will now go on to 58. Okay, boards and commissions. And I'm going to keep an eye so I can let, we will take a recess, but we're going to go at least through, let's see if we can get through all of these, and maybe recommending committee report. Okay, Agenda Item 58, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Nominee Brian Poole to the Board of Appeals. Mandy Thorne was appointed in 2011, serving as a lay member, and she has resigned. Mr. Poole is eligible and wishes to be appointed. Councilwoman Fiore, you're making the motion on this item, please.
Thank you. A motion to approve.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve, Agenda Item 58. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. We'll move on to 59. Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Reappointment of Luann Kutch and the Appointment of Nominees Abby Jacobin and Vincent Zamora to the Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund Board of Trustees. Options, reappoint Ms. Kutch and appoint Ms. Jacobin and Mr. Zamora, direct staff to bring forward in a future item and meeting to appoint other nominees. I am moved to approve those that have been willing to serve. So please vote on 59. And please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 60, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Nominee Dr. Constance Brooks to the Las Vegas Clark County Library Board of Trustees. Ms., how do you pronounce? Etoz, say it?
Itaralda.
Itaralda? That's Ito to me. Was appointed in 2011, and she's resigned after accepting a position with the city. Dr. Brooks is eligible and wishes to be appointed. Recommendations are to appoint Dr. Brooks or direct staff to bring forward an item to a future meeting to appoint a nominee to serve in this capacity. Councilman Krier, I understand you're prepared to make a motion, please.
I am. And before I do that, I just want to state that I've known Dr. Constance Brooks for a number of years in my capacity as a Regent for the Nevada System Education. Dr. Brooks serves as the Vice Chancellor for Government Affairs and oversees the diversity initiatives for INCI as well. She is a wonderful person. She is a highly intelligent person that I know will bring a wealth of experience and knowledge and love and passion to our Clark County and Las Vegas library districts. And I'm very happy that she accepted the nomination, and hopefully, she'll be able to serve for a number of years to come. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and that's your motion. So please vote on the motion and please post. Unanimously carried. Wonderful. Congratulations. So we are at a perfect point. It is 10 minutes after 12, and we are going to take a 20-minute recess so we don't have to eat here in front of you. of you.
The bill is eligible?
Yes, we can get through, excuse me, if everybody, I'm going to take that back, you have to sit back down. Councilman Anthony, could you repeat what you just said to me? So, the heat is on Councilman Anthony here.
Yeah, I just want to recommend, we do have four bills eligible for adoption at this meeting, and I know one of them, there's a few metro people here, and I would like them to get back to work protecting our city. So if we could just vote on those, then they can go back to headquarters.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Shall we pull that out, or just go right through the process?
It's item 61 through 64.
Okay. Recommending Committee Bill.
And, Madam Mayor, could you also, can we go forward to the new bills also?
Are they also?
They're right after, I can just read them, the six of them that we have.
All right, as long as you read, or Jeffrey reads, very quick.
We will.
Okay. We will hold off on recess if you see any panting coming from up here. Not my fault. Okay, Recommending Committee Bills eligible for adoption at this meeting. Bill Number 2018-36, Councilman Anthony, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Bill Number 2018-36, An Ordnance to Extend the Boundaries of the City to Particularly Describe the Land to Be Annexed to Make Its Inhabitants Subject to the Laws, Obligations, and Benefits of the City, and to Provide for Other Related Matters, Annexation 73495.
Move for approval.
There's a motion to approve, 61. Please vote and please post. And, Councilwoman, you have to punch.
Through you, I just didn't have the reach. Mayor, through you, could I just ask, on this bill, the availability of business licenses for retail marijuana stores, does that mean, are we offering any more medical marijuana dispensaries? Does this mean that, does this mean?
You're on 61.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And you have to vote.
All right, I'll take your word for it.
Thank you. Motion carries. We'll move on to 62. Bill Number 2018-37, Councilman Anthony, I know you want the bill read.
Yes, Mayor.
Bill Number 2018-37, An Ordnance Granting to MCI Metro Access Transmission Services Corporation, a corporation organized and existing under the laws of the State of Delaware and authorized to do business in Nevada, a non-exclusive franchise for a telecommunications service within the corporate limits of the city of Las Vegas, subject to and accordance with that certain franchise agreement entered into between the city of Las Vegas and MCI Metro Access Transmission Services Corporation, and providing for other related matters.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve, Agenda Item 62, please vote and please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 63, Bill Number 218-3A, Councilman Anthony?
Yes.
Please read.
Bill Number 2018-38, An Ordnance to Amend LVMC Title 10 to Add a New Chapter Regulating the Possession of Certain Items at Public Protest, Demonstrations, Rallies, Picket Lines, and Public Assemblies, and Providing for Other Related Matters. Move for approval.
Thank you, there's a motion, Agenda Item 63, please vote and please post.
I thought we could have an explanation, some people have been scared about what this was.
Motion carries. Agenda Item 64, Bill Number 2018-42, Councilman Anthony, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor. Bill Number 2018-42, An Ordnance to Amend LVMC Chapter 11.10 to Authorize the Parking Services Division to Enter into Agreements with the owners or lessees of certain types of parking lots or parking structures to provide parking enforcement services and to provide for other related matters. Move for approval.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve, Agenda Item 64, please vote and please post. Motion carries. City Clerk, do I read 18 now?
Yes. Yes, please.
Okay, Agenda Item 18, For Possible Action to Approve a Parking Enforcement Services Agreement Between Ike Gaming, Inc., City of Las Vegas City, where the city will provide enforcement services in connection with violations of the rules, including without limitation issuance of violations violating processing adjudication and collection of violation fines on parking lot located 211 North Seventh Street, with payment established at 50 percent of all proceeds of violation fines actually collected as described in the agreement, this is in Ward 5, with Councilman Creer. This item was pulled from the consented agenda, because without the approval of Item 64, the council was unable to approve this item earlier. So, Councilman Creer, do you have a motion, please?
Yes, Madam, may I move for approval, Item 64.
Okay, so Agenda Item 18.
Oh, 18, thank you, we have to go back.
There's been a motion to approve, please vote and please post. That motion carries. Ms. Ponacello, can we take our recess now, or do you want these?
With your indulgence, Chairana, could we read the new bills? I mean, move on to reading the new bills from?
Okay. Bills for adoption at a later meeting. Items 65 to 70, Bills 2018-2024, 39, 41, 43, and 2018-44, will be heard at a later meeting. We will be moving on to new bills.
I will read the new bills into the record. Bill Number 2018-45, An Ordnance to Extend the Boundaries of the City to Particularly Describe the Land to Be Annexed to Make Its Inhabitants Subject to the Laws, Obligations, and Benefits of the City, and to Provide for Other Related Matters, Annexation 73915. Bill Number 2018-46, An Ordnance to Amend Las Vegas Municipal Code 6.39.050 and 9.16.040 to Establish Requirements and Limitations for Outdoor Speakers and Other Amplification Devices Within the Downtown Entertainment Overlay District, and to Provide for Other Related Matters. Bill Number 2018-47, An Ordnance to Amend Various Provisions of the Unified Code, Development Code, to Establish Additional Basis and Standards for Determining Whether or Not a Use Has Been Abandoned or May Be Deemed Abandoned, and Therefore Required to Cease Operations, to Clarify When Use-Related Approvals Expire or Become Void, and to Provide for Other Related Matters.
Bill Number 2018-48, An Ordnance to Amend Various Chapters of the Unified Development Code, LVMC Title 19, to Correct and Update Tables and Figures Relating to Accessory Structure Setbacks and Patio Covers in Certain Residential Zoning Districts, and to Provide for Other Related Matters. Bill Number 2018-49, An Ordnance to Amend the Town Center Development Standards Manual to Update the Treatment of and Standards for the Use Motor Vehicle Sales Used, and to Provide for Other Related Matters. Bill Number 2018-50, An Ordnance to Amend Various Provisions of the Unified Development Code, UDC, to Add a New Chapter Relating to Form-Based Code and Transact Zones, Make Parallel Changes in Other Parts of the UDC Where Necessary, and Provide for Other Related Matters.
There's a question on this. Before I go ahead and make the order, Councilwoman Fiori wanted to make a comment on Agenda, one of the Agenda-ized items for that, so please.
Thank you. On the bills for adoption at a later date, on Item Number 66, because that might come up on the October 17 council meeting, and I have to be out of the country on city business on one of the boards I sit on, I would like to obey that for another 30 days.
So that does take advice from legal, please.
Councilwoman, I believe this was at recommending, and it was going to be at the recommending committee for October 15.
Can you speak in?
Can't hear you.
I believe this was at the recommending committee?
Yes.
And was to be at the October 15 meeting?
Right.
So is that?
So I'll be out of the country.
So you'll be out of the country at that time?
Yes.
So I guess when it goes, it is scheduled already to go to recommending committee at that time, they can just go ahead and obey it until when you return?
Thank you.
Does the sponsor of the bill get to have a?
Wait, 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 excuse me, I got to conversation, Councilman Soroka first.
As the sponsor of the bill, do I get to have a say on the timing?
Current, Councilman Soroka, currently, this bill is in the recommending committee, so any action to be taken will have to be coming out of the recommending committee.
Right.
Okay.
Explain that, so if this, can you help me with that?
I'm going back to legal.
Okay.
Because.
It was assigned to the recommending committee to hear the public comments at recommending committee, and it comes out of recommending committee before it comes back to the city council. So anything that, as a sponsor, it would have to go to the recommending committee. Any comments that have to be made, anything, any action to be taken will be at recommending committee.
Okay, now we're.
Not here at the city council level.
I understand. So at the recommending committee, so it's at recommending, do we make motions at city council for what happens at recommending committee?
We're not making any motion right now. It's still placed in the recommending committee.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And Councilman Coffin?
Well, I'm not sure what's happening in either, and I'm not sure if this is a motion to defer, I think it was a motion to obey it again. Am I correct?
You know, I, Councilman Coffin, it's an inquiry, and I think I would highly suggest you leave it at that.
Well, I've been told already. Hey, that's a violation of the Code of Conduct or something. Anyway, I just wanted to say that we definitely have a bill that's in front of us, not today, eligible for adoption, been delayed a lot, and I don't see any reason to delay it any further.
There's, okay.
These trips out of country, they're elective, I mean, you don't have to go on those trips.
Councilman Coffin, I really would prefer you to let it go to recommending, it was an inquiry. I would really not like to get into this debate on the floor.
Well, doesn't it have to go back to the council now?
Okay, so now what happens now is, let me read what we have here on the new bills. 2018-45 through 2018-50 are assigned to recommending committee members, Councilman Anthony Coffin and Councilwoman Fiori, who has indicated she will be out of town. So thus, if any so designated or unable to attend the clerk's office, will it coordinate finding substitutes as necessary at my direction. So we do know, and we will have that conversation, Madam Clerk, because we now know that Councilwoman Fiori will be out of town.
Yes.
And the meeting will be held at recommending. So, now, Ms. Ponacello, may we take a recess? Thank you very much. All right, we will now take a 20-minute recess. It is, look at your cell phones, it is 12:22. So we, not till 1:00. We'll have till 12:45. Mayor Protem is going to be running in there.
No, he wanted to argue with me, which I love you anyway, and it doesn't matter. Of course she'll argue. I love you to death, but you kill me sometimes. I know.
Can you imagine having been married to me?
No, I probably can't. I don't even, I... I don't even, I...
Okay, I think we are ready to continue our business of the day. And there are days we don't eat, so I thought this was very nice and we had to eat because it's Councilman Coffin's birthday.
Yes.
So how can you not?
Thank you for giving another year, Bob.
Yeah. Okay. So where we are, I have a lot of reading to do, our agenda item 77. Okay. This over here. Okay. Items 77 through 79 may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, public hearing items with no condition changes. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda. Agenda item 77, EOT 74214, non-public hearing, applicant owner Sand Hill Villas LLC, a request for an extension of time on an approved site development plan, review SDR 64976 for a proposed 30-unit multifamily residential development with a waiver of perimeter landscape standards to allow a zero-foot buffer along the east property line where six feet required on 1.26 acre southeast corner of Owens Avenue and Sand Hill Road, R3 medium-density residential. Number 78, EOT 74234, public hearing, applicant owner Industrial Road 2440-2497 LLC, and a request for an extension of time for a non-conforming use tavern at 2476 Industrial Road M Industrial Zone. And number 79, RQR 72891, public hearing, applicant owner is ESS Properties 114 LLC, and a required review of an approved variance V0184-95, which allowed a 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign billboard to be 144 feet from a residentially zoned property where 300 feet is the minimum separation distance required at 4851 East Bonanza Road C1 Limited Commercial Zone. All items are in Ward 3 with Councilman Coffin's staff recommends approval. Items 78 and 79 are public hearings, which I declare open. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on items 78 and 79? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and Mayor Pro Tem may have a motion for items 77 through 79.
Mayor, I move to approve items 77 through 79.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote and please post. The motions carry. Thank you very much. Okay, and now we're on to agenda item 80 has been abayed till the 7th of November. Items 81, 82 have also been obeyed to the 7th of November. So we are on to items 83 and 84. Okay. Items 83, 84, VAR 73062, and a request for variance to allow a 70-foot tall wireless communication facility where 30 feet is the maximum allowed, a three-foot corner side yard setback where 15 feet is required for proposed wireless communication cabinet structure, and a residential adjacency setback of 96 feet where a minimum of 210 feet is required on 1.05 acres of 5961 Mellow Avenue RE Residential Estates. So note, this request has been amended to allow a 70-foot tall wireless communication facility where 35 feet is the maximum allowed, a four-foot corner side yard setback where 15 feet is required for a proposed wireless communication cabinet structure and a residential adjacency setback of 11 feet where a minimum of 210 is required. Agenda item 84, SUP 73063, and a request for a special use permit for a proposed 70-foot tall wireless communication facility, Stealth Design Mono Elm, Councilwoman's very favorite. Use for 5961 Mellow Avenue. Note, this request has been amended for a proposed 70-foot tall wireless communication facility, Stealth Design Water Tower use. The applicant is Pinnacle Consulting, Inc., and the owner is the Robert Earl &amp; Jones Alpha Pool Family Trust. Planning commission and staff recommend denial on both items, which are in Ward 6 with Councilwoman Fiori, and are public hearing items, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Hello, my name's Michelle Lammer. I'm with Pinnacle Consulting, 1426 in North Marvin Street, Gilbert, Arizona, 85233.
Anything you would like to add before I go on with going to Mr. Summerfield?
It was abayed last time because we were changing the design to the water tank facility and we resubmitted everything, so I believe that you have all the information, so I won't go into it any longer. I know you've been here all day.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, the applicant is proposing, as indicated, a 70-foot tall wireless communication facility. They have updated that facility from the Mono Elm to a water tank design, but this is in the backyard of a single-family residence. Further, the proposed installation fails to meet the residential adjacency standards and conditional use requirements that restrict such use from being located on the same lot as a residence, and staff finds that the proposed use would be incompatible with the established use of the subject's site as a residential property, as well as with the surrounding residential land uses, and is recommending denial. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Do we have anyone from the public who wishes to comment on either agenda item 83 or 84? Anything else you'd like to add?
There is another site, which I know that we talked about, approximately a mile north that is exactly zoned the same and placed pretty much exactly on the property as we're proposing for this. So I just wanted to remind the council of that. So there is a precedent.
And it's taller, correct? Okay.
It is taller, yes.
Okay, so at this point, since there's no public comment, any questions from staff?
Madam Mayor, just for you real quick, there's a gentleman with his hand up. I'm not sure if you understand the process of what's going on. Maybe that's what I thought. Maybe we can reread the process of if you have a question, maybe speak with the mayor and we can...
Okay, so Fitz-Germain to 63 or 83 or 84, we'll wait a moment to see. Ms. McAlhoun, is his reference for these two projects?
She's got to show it to him.
Okay, we'll wait a moment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Could I ask a question while we're waiting? Councilwoman Fiori, is the other one in your ward also? And is that one on residential area too?
So it's the exact... So originally, they had come to me a few months ago and they wanted to put this really tall, like 80-foot ugly tree cell tower. So I said, you know, let me check with the neighbors and, you know, what do the neighbors want? And they don't like the tree. They said that the water tower down the street was fine, but they didn't want it as tall as the one down the street, a mile down the street, same street. So that's... I asked them if they could lower it and they said yes. So they've been working on this for about four, five months with the neighbors now, and so they've... When they came back and it was changed to what they want, now it's significantly from a very unattractive tree to a pretty water tower where you wouldn't even know it was a cell tower, because it looks like a water tower. In the rurals, water towers are okay.
Right.
But those ugly other things are not.
I know, I know. I just didn't realize we were putting these on private, you know, where people live.
Well, we actually, yeah, we... To answer that, we looked for like open city park, something like that, and we couldn't find a place for it.
Why do you need it so badly?
Explain our...
Why do you need it so badly?
Yeah.
Why do you need it so badly? Because it's going against... You're going to set a precedent.
Well, the... Sorry, I'll state my name, Chad Ward, Pinnacle Consulting, 1426 North Marvin Street, Gilbert, Arizona. This goes along...
You live in Arizona?
Gilbert, Arizona.
Excuse me?
He's a consultant.
Oh, he's a consultant?
Yes.
Where were the people who live on the property?
They're representing them.
You're representing them as a consultant?
Correct. So the need is part of a larger, bigger picture, right? As we move into the next generation of technology, you need more communication sites, whether it be, you know, macro cell sites, there's, you know, other projects going on in the downtown area. With the more users that are on the network and all the data that's being used, there's... It's the depiction that I use a lot of times, it's like trying to breathe through a straw when you're... When the network gets clogged down. And as we move to, you know, 5G technology, you're going to be seeing driverless cars, you know, really everything's going to be run through these cellular networks.
So basically, this is because of the growth of the industry?
Correct.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to go back to public hearing. We have a gentleman here. If you will push the button in front of you, it will turn red. There you are. And if you will state your name, we don't need an address.
My name is Omar Shakir.
Okay.
I've got a major question. This is a consulting firm that has been contracted by a privatized business owner to put up a cell tower. Cell towers can do a lot of damage if they're used in a negative light. They can hack... You can hack things from hundreds, if not thousands, of miles away, depending on the amount of power that is being used by the cell tower. I would proceed with extreme caution.
Can I ask questions?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you, sir.
Now, you know this is... Do you happen to live in Ward 6?
Like I said, depending on the amount of power that this cell tower is using, it would not even matter where you live.
Okay, so here's my... No, but what I'm saying, it's Councilwoman Fiori's ward, and that's where it is. We understand your concerns and what you've said. I just was inquiring, are... Do you happen to live in that neighborhood? Do you happen to live in that neighborhood?
Oh, give me a random cross street in Ward 6.
No, no. Do you know what Ward 6 is?
Nope.
Okay, so where do you live, sir?
I live all over. I walk a lot. I'm kind of homeless, so I just walk around the whole city.
Okay, well, on another note, on a different note, just because you're here, and I thank you for being here, and I don't know if you know Kathy Gibson, but we're working hard on our homeless situation. And obviously, you have a lot of brains in there if you're talking like this, so maybe we can work together and find a place for you to be, maybe even in Ward 6. And since you know so much about all this electronic and stuff, I mean, I don't know if Kathy Gibson's around, but we have a lot of programs out there for jobs and stuff to where you don't have to be homeless.
I have a job. My job is to take care of myself and my health. It's first and foremost. Outside of that, we'll get there when we get there, but my first job is help.
You know what, sir? I got it. You know what? Here, here's what I'm going to tell you. You're opposing something in my ward, and you don't live in my ward, number one.
You don't have to live in that ward for it to...
It's fine, you don't have to live in the ward. But when I ask you, like, what is this doing? Like, how is this affecting you? And you're giving me these blanket answers. You know what? Just thank you.
If I may, Councilwoman, what I'm going to do, thank you for coming. No, no, no. Your advice is very strong. We've heard it. We thank you. I had reopened public comments, said you could make your comment, and we appreciate it. Thank you. But if you really do want to find a home, please be back in touch with us. We can help you with that and a job and taking care of yourself. Thank you for coming, sir. All right, now back to you, Councilwoman Fiori. Councilwoman Fiori, if I might, I'd like to ask a question. Councilman Coffin, now he has a question for you or a comment.
I think it's more... I just wanted to say that thank you for presenting these kinds of designs. I was in California 10 days ago, saw a water tower next to a freeway. I knew it wasn't for anything but cell service and thought, so that's what they look like. That's a hell of a lot better than those trees that look like they were designed by Tim Burton in A Nightmare Before Christmas.
You didn't have to go that far.
These have... I could see a multitude of uses for interesting and not looking artificial designs. Is that made out of fiberglass, by the way?
Yeah, it's a fiberglass material that allows, you know, the signal to come in and out of the material. And to comment on that, we have worked, as Councilwoman Fiori discussed, for several months with her team on trying to find a concept that was going to be acceptable and ultimately a better design for the community so that things are looking more stealth and not, you know, staring at them right in the face.
It's creative, by the way. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's continue on, Councilwoman, please.
Thank you. So I would like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion to approve.
I...
Okay, Councilwoman, make your comment.
I have to say this, Michelle. I, living in a ward that has lots of these devices. We also, by the way, Mr. Coffin, have one that's stealth that is a water tower. So you didn't have to go that far. You could have seen it right next to you.
That's a Ward 6. I'm invited.
However, this is what bothers me. First, we're putting it on residential property. That has a concern to me where somebody's supposed to be living. Is anybody living there now? Okay. Secondly, we're asking for double the amount of the facility. It says you want to allow a 70-foot tall communication facility where 35 feet is the maximum allowed. So you want double, not just 10 feet or 15. You want double there. And then you have, let's see, another thing here is you have... Let me just find it where you are here. You have 210 feet required, and you're only 96, so that's 114 less. I should say more. So that's two of the items that you have to make a correction on. And if that's what they want in Ward 6, then that's what they want in Ward 6. But I'll tell you, we don't want it in Ward 1, and I'm going to have to vote against it, because I don't like having a lot of these precedents set, just like those lousy-looking trees set a precedent, and everybody had them. And now you have to... But we started doing the other things, and now they're doing it, so that's good. But I wanted to let you know that.
All right, so the motion has been made. Please vote, Councilman Creer. We need you.
Might just ask you one question. There's already an agreement in place between the homeowner and whomever the cell tower company... And you guys are representing... You own the company that's putting in the cell tower?
Correct. It's a subsidiary affiliate of Pinnacle Consulting.
Pinnacle Consulting, so you guys physically own it?
Yeah.
And you've worked out a lease agreement with the homeowner?
With the homeowner, and then subsequently the anchored carrier, which is Verizon.
Okay. And the reason I say that, I know that out in your ward, there's someone that has built a... Dug a hole. There's a big, you know, a big rebar that's put in there, and then they backed out on the deal. That has nothing... I mean, that's their deal, but I just want to ensure that this is going to happen.
Yeah, if we start it, we're going to finish it.
Okay.
Okay, please vote and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your comments. All right, we'll move on now to agenda items 85 and 86.
No, that was only...
84? That was not... You're correct. It was not abayed. Sorry.
It's just the second part.
Just technicality, motion on agenda item 84, please.
Motion to approve?
Thank you. There's a motion to approve agenda item 84. Please vote and please post. And the motion carries. We'll move on to agenda items 85, 86. VAR 73552, in request for variance to allow zero additional parking spaces where four additional parking spaces are required for parking impaired development on 8.43 acres northwest corner Cheyenne Avenue and Decatur Boulevard. Agenda item 86, SUP 73553, in request special use permit for an automobile rental use at 4920 West Cheyenne Avenue Suite Number 150-C-2, general commercial zone. The applicant is Enterprise Leasing Company West LLC, and the owner is Red Feather Property LLC. The planning commission and staff recommend denial of both items. These are in Ward 5 with Councilwoman Creer, and are public hearings, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes. My name is Linda Fowler with Enterprise Rent-A-Car at 6855 Bermuda.
And are you the owner?
No.
You're representative. Okay, thank you. Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, the proposed use will precipitate a reduction for required parking spaces for an already parking impaired development, and therefore, staff has recommended denial of both of these applications. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on either of these or both of these items? Hearing none. I will close this, the public hearing. Anything else you'd like to add?
I would like to say that for this location, we're on the west side of the property. There are several buildings on the property, and the landlord has also done a parking study, and they are not at full... The parking spaces aren't at full capacity. We, as Enterprise Rent-A-Car, we are just looking to be able to reside in a desk, in an office, to offer the rental car for the people that are coming through. So we're not looking for parking spaces as just to bring a car and get the customer on the road from the Gerber Body Shop versus having to bring them back to our main office and then having them go from there. So it's a customer service issue for our national... That we are business partners with Gerber, and also Geico Insurance that also is in that particular suite.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilman Creer, how do you feel on agenda item 85?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't see a problem with this. This won't be overparked. You're only going to have three or four cars there, and they're going to be coming in and out. And there is... If you know the facility, then it's... They have more than ample parking there. So if there's any other comment or objection, I can make a motion for approval.
I think we can take that as a motion to approve agenda item 85. Pardon me. Please vote and please post. And that carries. And on agenda item 86, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sister item, agenda item 86, I move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve on agenda item 86. Please vote and please post. It's all right. Motion carries.
Thank you very much for your time.
I'm glad you have business between Uber and Lyft. I know the rental car business really has been impacted, so good luck.
We're working on that.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Good luck to you. Thank you very much. Agenda item 87 has been abayed to the 17th of October. Agenda item 88 is tabled till January 16th of 2019. And agenda item 89 has been withdrawn, so we are now on to agenda item 90.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Through you, if I could just ask Robert, any things that we wanted to put on as conditions for 87, will those be written out by your department before it comes up? Or should I... Is there something I should do?
Madam Mayor, through you on 87, we can, when we brief next time, we'll have some draft conditions so that we'll have those ready to go in time for that hearing.
Yeah, on the 30th, they for permits and to make sure it has full inspections.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so on to agenda item 90, SUP 73761. Public hearing, applicant owner QI or Q1 Wang. For possible action, a request for special use permit for proposed short-term residential rental use at 8105 Heavenly Star Circle, RCL, single-family compact lot zone. And this is in Ward 2 with Councilman Soroka. Planning Commission recommends denial. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing. I declare it open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, and City Council members.
Your name, please.
I am Colleen Gerardo. I am Amber Chi Wang's wife.
Okay, thank you very much. And you are?
I'm Chi Wang.
Thank you very much. Do you wish to make any comment at this point?
Yes, please. May I look at my statement and refer to it? Thank you. This is my wife, Amber, and we are members of the Vegas Vacation Rental Association. We met with Councilwoman Soroka in August, and he gave us some recommendations, and we have followed every single recommendation. Our intention is to rent our home out furnished as a long-term rental, but we hope to fill in the gaps with short-term rentals. The market will allow in our property is Red Rock enthusiasts and conventioneers, bicyclists, hikers, and families. And they usually use the home for sleeping and cooking, and our product is restful lodging. We joined the VBRA. We completed the short-term rental class at CSN. Your certificate? We have the 24-hour security response team, which is run through Norton Security. Here's a card with... That we give all of our neighbors. We have the noise-aware monitor. We have the party squasher monitor. We have an iron clad... Sorry. An ironclad contract for our guests that strictly forbids parties and outlines every single violation of the Las Vegas nuisance codes, including noise, parking, and trash. We have a security camera out front. We have appropriate design practices and policies, style, and signage, which guarantees the safety of our guests and at the same time protects us and our community from harm. There are no schools, parks, churches, nor community facilities of any kind within 1,000 feet of the residence. There is no pool, and the backyard is tiny. There are no chairs or tables, and there is no shade, and people will be inside the house, not outside. Guests will be discouraged from going outdoors. We will vet our guests immediately when they rent our property and inquire... I'm sorry, when they inquire to rent our property. We will not allow anyone, we feel is being dishonest, to rent our property. We will personally meet our guests and check their IDs when they arrive. We have the noise-aware product and the party squasher product to alert us if there's anything going on at our property that is against our contract. Our home meets every single standard for passing sanitation, safety, and fire code inspections. We have outside security cameras, a coded lock, and policies that ensure neighbors' peace, safety, and code compliance. We have met with our neighbors in a 600-feet radius and have gained support from 37 of our neighbors. Three specifically within a 100-foot radius, 16 from within a 200-foot radius, and eight on the exact same street. All of the neighbors have our phone number and have been shown our rental contract and have been advised to call us immediately at either of our phone numbers. We live literally two minutes away, and we both have our cell phones with us 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and we guarantee an immediate response, even if it means sending our security team. Once approved, we'll have the 24-hour security response cards passed out to all of our We give our guests recommendations for local businesses in the area, including groceries, restaurants, gas stations, casinos, bicycle stores, and recreational equipment stores. Our plan is simply to make enough money to keep our second home and to send our daughter to Faith Lutheran High School at the same time. Staff recommends approval, and we would much appreciate that if the council members would follow staff recommendation.
Very thorough, wonderful. This is a public hearing, and I would invite anybody forward on comment here. In a closed public hearing, I'm going to turn to Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, the applicant is proposing to operate a short-term residential rental unit that meets all minimum special use requirements under Title 1912. And as indicated, staff is recommending approval with condition number one requiring expungement if the property is to be sold. However, I would ask that Deputy Planning Director Mary McElhone provide some additional information that we have on this site.
Okay, and if I might, before that, you agreed, though, to release if, in fact, you sell the property...
Yes, absolutely. We agree.
Permission to expunge, okay. Ms. McElhone?
Mary McElhone, for the record. So this property has had some code enforcement activity. They were visited by code enforcement on August 18th, where they confirmed that there was a short-term renter staying at the property. And you host, who is our third-party compliance software that we utilize, has shown that they have been renting out. We have five documented stay in August, four in July, three in June, four in May, and a few in those earlier months as well. Thank you.
Would you might like to make some comment back on those?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, this is... My wife was handling that, and she had a long-term renter in there for a period of three months and discovered there were a lot of problems with the renter. She had heard about Airbnb, thought it was easier. I let her do what she wanted to do with it. And next thing I knew, she was applying for a license, and as soon as she applied for the license, the code enforcement came and found a renter there and did give a ticket. That's when I stepped in, because her English isn't very well, and I didn't think she was handling things, you know, up to code and expectation. In fact, when she had come to the last meeting in August to state her case before the council, I think she had about one minute before they shut her down on the basis of her English. So that's why I have stepped in, and we are going full-forward with legal, you know, the legal road to handle this property illegally. We want to be one of the legal operators.
Okay, well, I thank you, and I... This really is all in the hands of Councilman Soroka. We tend to go with the ward leader. Not always, but usually.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. While you have done a lot of things since we've spoken, I have a question. Have you rented out the home as a short-term rental since we spoke?
No. In fact, we have a long-term rental.
Okay. Planning Commission voted to deny. At the time, there were 21 protests, two for. Since then, there's been 32 more protests, one for, for a total of 53 against and three for. However, when we plotted those locations, there weren't any near your home one way or another.
Right.
So they were further away. And so I was looking at that. Your location is in a cul-de-sac interior to a neighborhood. So they were further away, and, uh, so I was looking at that. Your location is in a cul-de-sac interior to a neighborhood. So you just shared that your neighbors immediately around you on the cul-de-sac are supportive.
Absolutely.
Which you indicated in the meeting with me when we were in my office.
Yes.
So, further, I asked you to have a neighborhood meeting.
We did. We have our attendance sheet here.
Can you submit those for the record?
Yes.
Please.
Where's the attendance sheet? And we also have our thirty-seven, uh, support letters.
Please submit those as well. Thank you. You, you have done a lot of homework.
Yes.
You are not the same people that were in my office. You are not the same people before Planning Commission.
No, the class taught us a lot.
Yeah, you learned a lot. One of the concerns we had was the rigor of your contract.
Yes, the contract is extremely rigid.
And can you give some examples of your contract?
Yes, our contract outlines every single, uh, policy in the, uh, Las Vegas codes of nuisance codes. And we have a very strict policy that they will lose their entire deposit if we get, if we have to respond to a neighbor's call with any infraction of our policies. I think I gave you a copy of the, the contract, yes.
Wow.
They lose their entire deposit.
And then one of the other concerns we had was that you were operating without a license, and we talked about that in my office, and you had ceased doing.
Completely ceased.
Code enforcement, Mary, can you confirm that nothing in the last thirty-ish, forty-five days?
Councilwoman Soroka, um, yes, I can. So when we run this information, we usually run it a couple of days before City Council, and U Host did not show any stays at all in the month of September, only those in August. So I would say it's probably pretty accurate.
I was prone to deny, but I'm telling you, you made this very difficult to find a way to deny. And every neighbor that stepped up to the microphone, I mean, nobody stepped up. That's, I don't know if we've ever had one like this before. Wow. So, we normally have a line of folks out the door for this kind of thing.
They're all behind us.
And I tend to believe you because of your, your, your compliance with everything we described, and they're not here.
No.
Wow. So, the, the, we, as described earlier, we asked that you voluntarily submit to a relinquishment of your SUP should you put the house up for sale. I know you live nearby.
Yep.
Uh, you showed me on the map when you're in the office, just a short distance away. That matters. Uh, would you agree to a six-month review, administrative review by, uh, code enforcement, Mary? Is that how we say that? A six-month admin review? Or, Robert?
Madam Mayor, if I might, so, uh, the condition, Councilman, would be, uh, an administrative required review shall be performed six months from issuance of business license.
Okay, that means that if you have any code violations or anything, we're going to take away your SUP?
Understood.
Okay, and these, and just to share, you're the, coming across as the example of how to do this. You're a mom-and-pop kind of operation, one home, not a, not a corporation. You don't have multiple out there. It is where you lived before you got together, and it's your former home?
Yes.
So, you're, you're kind of the, you're right on the fringe of, uh, not getting it, but I'm going to move to, uh, approve, surprisingly.
Thank you very much.
So that's my motion. I move to approve, uh, item ninety on the agenda.
Okay, and I, I can echo that because I'm listening to my colleagues here who agree that you have really worked hard and done the right things and probably have created a role model. I don't recall, Councilwoman Soroka, ever before not having people come here and protest, so.
Thank you.
Could you submit, Mayor, could we ask that they submit all their documents that they brought with them for the?
Yeah, and we have more at home that we can bring at another.
Well, just what you have, your map, your map that you brought?
Yeah, the map. Absolutely.
And do you agree to the conditions? I should have asked that. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the only, uh, we need, everybody please vote, and then we'll post.
And Madam Mayor, I just wanted to say, I, I think not just a role model, uh, in, um, a role model is how you can work through the bureaucracy of government also. If you can get a good, good job, you learned, and that's what it's all about. Not to complain and not to, but to.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. You're free to go. Wonderful, great, good.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Yeah, no, it's wonderful. Yeah, it is.
Don't let me down. I'm going to get strung out by my other neighbor.
Okay. Yeah. I don't think anybody needs anything more. Thank you. Okay. Now, uh, that was, uh, where are we now? Agenda items ninety-one through one-oh-three have been obeyed to November seventh. And agenda item one-oh-four has been obeyed till November seventh, so we are moving right on now to one-oh-five. SUP seven-three-four-seven-two, public hearing, applicant owner Francisco Zuvic Marinovic, for possible action, appeal of the denial of Planning Commission on a request for a special use permit for proposed short-term residential rental used with a waiver to allow a hundred-and-sixty-five-foot distance separation from a similar use where six-hundred-and-sixty feet is required at eight-one-six Alhambra R-one, single-family residential zone. This is in Ward Three with Councilman Coffin. Planning Commission recommends denial. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Is the applicant here or representative?
Hi, I'm Francisco Zuvic Marinovic.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, nice to meet you.
And with you?
I'm just helping him as a speaker sometimes.
Okay, thank you. And your name, sir?
My name is, uh, Al Aubrey.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, do you, I see you have prepared remarks. Do you want to go ahead?
Well, yeah, um, the thing is that when I start, uh, applying for the license, uh, they told me, uh, everything was okay. I have the, the, um, the next house was over six-hundred-and-sixty feet. But, um, um, so then I, I paid the one-thousand and something, uh, to apply for the license, and after that, I have a personal issue. I have to leave the country. Uh, my mom died, so I, I, I lost the meeting. I arrived at eleven, and the meeting was the ten. And in that interview, that's, um, uh, there was another house they apply. The house, um, was the two-one-one-seven Alhambra Drive, and that one, they, they short the, about a hundred-and-sixty-five meter.
Feet.
Feet. So, um, and then, uh, so that's why, you know, I, right now, I, I'm a hundred-and-sixty-five because I couldn't be in, in the, in the, in the meeting. And, um, that's, that's the thing, and, um.
You have everything.
One, I have, yeah, I have a, I, I show, I have a, the entry with a visa, when, when I exit the country. I leave the country. When I, I arrive, I have, uh, the, that certificate of my mom here also, uh, translate, and, um.
...sixty-five feet of this location. Because that was approved, it now requires the waiver and so staff is forced to change their recommendation from where it was when this was originally on planning commission. Also, Ms. McElhone has some additional information as well.
Mary McElhone for the record. So code enforcement has had some activity on this property. A notice and order was issued on July 5th of 2018. And recently, on July 15th, code enforcement made contact with a short-term renter from California who is renting the property for, it sounded like, one or two nights. The property has actually been assessed fees of $2,962 and for ongoing rental activity that's taken place over the last few months, including September. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on agenda? Item 105. I'm going to close the public hearing and turn this over to Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Mayor. Mary, if I could ask you, did the owner have a license of some kind for short-term rentals? Business license?
Councilman Coffin to you through the mayor. No, this is not a licensed short-term rental. There should have been no activity going on in this property.
There should not have been any, okay. I'm very familiar with that neighborhood. It's a nice neighborhood, old and well-established. We have had many, many objections, Francisco, to this. And yes, there has been a problem. You have been doing some business without permission.
That's why I was applying for the license.
I know, but the application does not permit you to do the business. But I understand the odd circumstances and, of course, the tragic circumstances of the loss of your mother. May she be with God in heaven. What I wanted to say is that we think, though, that because of the circumstances involving the earlier approval of a neighbor, very close, which takes you out of the picture, that Mayor and I have discussed the possibility of finding out from staff. You paid a lot of money just to show up here today to make your appeal. And I think that was $1,000, something like that. We want to find out if we have a procedure for refunding money when we feel that through unfortunate circumstances beyond the control of the applicant, they find out that really their application is not going to fit because it has been made literally non-legal.
Madam Mayor, through you. Unfortunately, for... The appeal was only $100, the appeal of the planning commission decision. So that wasn't the original application fee. So to be clear on the fees. Secondly, those fees are all related to processing of the application. And technically, this application has not been made illegal. This is still a legal thing. It's at the discretion of this council whether to grant a waiver of the distance separation. So this is still a completely valid application at this point, what the applicant is asking for. And we don't have a policy for refunding fees where there's not been a staff error. I think we've only had one instance in recent memory where we've refunded fees where something is made at the council and that was only because staff had made an error in putting that application forward. So...
My question, though, to you is, they were in the tunnel when he was called out of town for his mother's illness and passing. So when the second application came in for the Al Hambrus circle, his application and money was there first that should have held something, I would think. That was earnest money for the processing, everything you said. I'm not arguing with any of that. I'm just seeing that here we had all the pieces followed and not talking about violations. But the money was in the tunnel, making that first reservation for the first STR in the area. Now, because of extenuating circumstances beyond his control, he's out of the country and the other one comes in. And I don't recall being notified that there was another applicant who had put up their money and was viable when we then agreed to the second applicant, which obviously means he's out of luck. So that's why I was talking with Councilman to ask his permission if that were possible.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, again, I understand. That is one of the issues when we do have these ones that come in in the same neighborhood at the same time. It really normally would be a first in line. However, because of the abeyance that ended up letting the other, the one who came after him, get approved first. And so technically, there wasn't a waiver request until this body acted on the previous application. So, for instance, if that other application, if this had gone through without the abeyance, that other application actually would have had to modify their request and then request the waiver if you had acted on this application first. It really is, unfortunately, an order of operation issue with the waiver. And legally, you know, it's a discretionary review at this point because he's requested... He has to request the waiver. And so technically, this body could still act on this application. And so unfortunately, in the code, I do not have a process for reimbursing fees on applications that have already been put through the process.
And the waiver that was requested was because he had to an emergency leave the country. Was that... Does that get filed through you?
All that we received is the request to obey it. Yeah, the request to obey it would have been what we would have received. And then the circumstances shifted as a result of that abeyance for the reason he had to be out of the country. And that resulted in why we have a waiver on the item now.
Okay. So I understand all, before I turn it over to Councilwoman Fiori, but I have a sense we're probably on the same page here. Because this is a first and it is unusual, has... Is there a pathway, regardless? I understand it all and it's possible that the council would vote against it. Is there a pathway to refunding through your office and division? And I see you're looking... Are you looking to legal? Are you looking to our city manager?
I was going to say, Mayor, that normally the waiver of fees rests with the city manager's office with regard to the ability to waive fees. We're going to have the same situation like with the Ogden where there's multiple applications kind of backing one another.
No, 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 excuse me. Only because it's very, very different in the sense of while he... Had he notified somebody somewhere that my mother is passing away, I've got to go, that's why my application. I'm not saying that we would have treated it differently at that time. But this is the most unusual of circumstances and he's out $1,000 having gone through unless the way... Look what's going on here. There's the conference.
Right.
No, that's all right. So I just...
Mayor, we've run into this situation before where someone's asked for an abeyance and someone else who was in line for a short-term rental has come in and taken that place and now they are subject to the waiver situation.
Right.
Staff would have to evaluate each person's situation and determine whether or not those wanted a waiver, a waiver and a fee refund. I'm not sure if staff's going to have the ability to do that.
Okay. Well, that's what I'm asking.
Sure.
Because this is so much more unusual than what's going on in some of the other high-rise buildings. And, you know, really, it's a personal thing that this gentleman didn't notify, look, this is, I have an emergency situation. It's just unique in itself. I know we've passed over others in the pipeline for different reasons. But this is just a sensitivity and a personal question that... Because of the unusual.
And I know it seems a little harsh, Mayor, for me, but...
Well, that's what lawyers do. Lawyers are always harsh and unreasonable.
But, you know, the thing is, you know, the thing is, I guess, development doesn't stop because of someone's personal situation. So there's no way we could have frozen the process for those other applicants.
Had you known?
Even had we known, I don't think the process would have ceased even had we known.
Madam Mayor, Scott Adams, City Manager. You know, we do... There are provisions in the ordinances for fee waivers. When we do these, it's generally in things like building rentals and a lot of different things. Rarely have we ever... I don't ever remember waiving fees for an entitlement application. I'm reluctant to do so on a project like this where the issue of short-term rentals are of such scrutiny by the council and such competition and exclusion because of the waiver process and, you know, it's been a very, very contentious process. I might suggest, in huddling with the planning director, I'm told that there may be some outstanding civil penalties that might apply against this property. It might be that you, as a council, could choose to reduce those fees going forward for the amount of the fees that he expended on this project, thereby giving him the same dollar value relief, but in a different way.
Okay, thank you. Very cogent, very wise. Councilwoman Fiori, I am sorry you've been waiting.
Thank you. Again, this is... This is definitely a different circumstance. And, you know, as the council and as, you know, brilliant and as I brag about our staff all the time, there's sometimes we just don't have everything as smooth as it should be. And I'm going to, you know, again, go back to, he paid his $1,000 to apply. He had to leave. His mom passed away. He's got his passport. He's got all of the proof there. So in this, in this particular situation, you know, I would give the guy a waiver. So I'm... To let him go forth and work on it. It's not my... It's Councilman Coffin's ward, but this is a special circumstance and I have a heart and I, you know, also have a mom that I love very much. So I'm going to be on the side of the applicant.
Thank you. And Mayor Protem, you wanted to make comment?
I just wanted to comment that I agree with giving the money back. I think you're all right. The problem, again, is what I've said before. We have to have consistency. There's not been just one or two or three times that I've asked for a waiver for somebody and I'm told you... I mean, getting the money back for them. These are people who don't have much money. And every time, I've been told, we can't do it. So you know what? I had to go out and raise money and help pay it and not tell anybody. What I'm trying to say is, well, I guess maybe I should do that.
I get you're soft. No, because then maybe we'll lean on you a little bit.
You're going to lean on me? But what I'm... These mistakes happen and they're going to continue to happen. And they're going to happen because we're going to get more and more things like this. And I'm just saying that I agree with all of you, except please, let's make it consistent so that one board member isn't... One council member isn't told one thing and another another thing until maybe it comes up in council.
And finally, before I turn it over to Councilman Coffin, in whose ward you are, the reality is to go ahead and give you a distance separation different, that is different from the others, that sets a precedent, then we have no distance separation at all. So in my opinion, I could never vote to let you be under the 660. We have a precedent. We have a policy. We have to stick to that. My only concern was because there are things that happen in life. You're out $1,000, to say nothing of what Mary McElhone has talked about, fees and everything. But it just... That's the way sometimes in life, things, life is timing and because of a whole lot of different reasons here, in my opinion, you deserve your original application fee back. And that's what I would vote for. I cannot vote to... I personally cannot vote in favor of allowing you something different from the policy we've already established because then we have no policy. Once we've done it once, we have none. But your circumstances were so unusual and maybe the way that our city manager has seen a way perhaps to make that a quid pro quo. I mean, I wish I had a stash of pocket money that... Or had the clout that this Mayor Protem has to raise money. I'd get you your $1,000 and not even bother the city. Because the reality is, it's one... This is the most amazing thing I've heard and it all makes sense. I cannot vote for your application here on that because then we don't have a precedent. We don't have a law that applies to everybody. I'm very big on the 660 and that's just it. So at this point...
So Mayor, I'm going to be with you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you very much for your recognition on this. Francisco, I did hear about the unlicensed activity there. And I also hear the council members talking about the possibility of going easy on you. It makes sense in many ways. It seems fair. For instance, in the Ogden, which was brought up by Counselor Scott, Brian Scott, we have been maintaining a queue, an informal queue in the scramble, should we say, for the STRs in that building, which, if permitted, are going to be limited to a very low number. So in that kind of circumstance, one building, potentially more than five or six, we're going to have a limit. We're keeping a queue of people. So we are trying to be fair to those kinds of people. That circumstance is a lot different than a single-family residence in a neighborhood where there happens to also be one there. And yeah, it was approved. But, you know, it's like this. There is a policy, there is a, I believe, a policy in existence for appealing. You have filed letters for appeal, I believe, already. I see them in my file here. So those appeals, we... They should come to the council, but let me find out right now if they can come to the council. Do you have filed appeals? Counsel... Staff, what's the story on that?
Madam Mayor, through you. So my understanding is he's appealed right now just the decision of the planning commission. I do not believe he has filed any appeals of the civil penalties that have been assessed against him that Deputy Director McElhone indicated. To my knowledge, he has not made action on those, but I do not have that in front of me to say that conclusively.
Okay. And those appeals, again, are because he was turned down by planning commission?
Correct. That's the only appeal that, to my knowledge, he's done so far was the appeal to the clerk's office because he was denied by planning commission and it was final action there. So he's appealed that decision to the council. That's what's before you now. With regard to his civil penalties, that would be a subsequent appeal or waiver request of those penalties going forward.
Thank you. Okay, Your Honor, thank you. I'm going to make a request of our staff to present to us an agenda item whereby we consider a refund of appeal costs that Mr. Marinovic paid. And so that's a condition. Certainly, it doesn't have to pass the council, but it's a way to give an avenue to those people on the council who understand that something odd happened here and we're going to give that a consideration. Now, is that correct? We can put that up on agenda in the future?
Mr. Scott?
I guess, yes, I was just going to caution the council just because, you know, the fact is, once it gets to this point, the city's out certain monies for mailings and things of that nature, staff time.
But we don't have to refund everything. We'll hear that case if it comes on the agenda. Talk about hard cost versus soft cost in this case, just as we do with the other kinds of things that come to us here. We can meet a reasonable standard.
Because there's also, you know, there's also the contractor who has to go out and put the signs up and everything else. So there are certain costs associated with these applications that I don't know if management would be okay with.
Staff will figure out. If they can cost out a $60 million courthouse in a couple of weeks, they can figure out how to make this happen.
What I'd like to ask, I think, if I may, to ask our council with an SEL, in front of us today, is this 105, it has nothing to do with civil penalties or anything?
Correct. There's nothing to do with civil penalties, just the waiver with...
So today is it up or down on agenda item 105?
Correct. The waiver for the distance separation.
Okay. On the distance separation.
Yes.
And then my suggestion is going to be that a... My suggestion is going to be thereafter, I'm voting on this item that you then make an appointment back in with Councilman Coffin on everything else he just said. Is that all right?
Sure, sure. Ward three is open.
So it's for you.
All the time, even for people who don't like what we are about to recommend, which is denial. And the reason is, Francisco and Al, is it... The neighborhood is really solidly against it. I have a very, very thick stack of protests. And they're reasonable. And the reason why is because this neighborhood is very close to the strip. And there are people who are buying homes and fixing them up on speculation. And they make them a little pretty and then they try to put them out to short-term rentals. And that's really objectionable because it is... Well, it's... Let's face it, it's a free market. They're trying to get in. Hotels are sometimes really expensive. So they try this other thing, but it is not good to have too many commercial businesses in a residential area. That is, in essence, what you're asking us to do. Allow you to do a commercial business in a residential area. And for that reason, I'm going to move to deny this item with all due respect to both of you and with gratitude for the fact that you did come and you exercised your rights. And again, sympathy to you, Francisco, for the loss of your mom.
So, Councilman Coffin? I agree with, you know, your distance separation and stuff, but the issue that I still have is, he wouldn't have needed a waiver if he didn't have to leave the country for his mom. So, you know, I'm sure this will go your way and normally precedent is we vote with you, but on this particular one, I'm not going to vote with you.
Okay, there's a motion on agenda item 105. Please vote and please post. And the motion carries. So you're denied, but hopefully you will come back to talk with Councilman Coffin. And I still, I'm going to stick my nose in to see if, after everything comes through on the... What, when... Is Felipe still here? They're going to make an appointment to come back to you. Yes? Councilman Coffin? They're going to make an appointment to come back to you on the civil things that Ms. McElhone brought up. And then we're going to talk about what we can do to help him because of the circumstances that were beyond your control.
I think it's an excellent idea, Your Honor, and Ward three will be available to you to talk about this and perhaps other ideas you have for business ventures in the city.
Yeah, well, actually, I... Last week, I tried to contact you. Last week, I called and I spoke with the secretary. He said, was the man? And he's supposed to call me back to give you...
Okay, but now you have... He will make sure. And here's Ydo, who will take...
Ydo. Ydo, Y-D-O. Ydo is right here. Thank you, Ydo, for taking over, gentlemen. Thank you for appearing before us.
She's the...
Right there, that lady, that lovely lady, right there with the smile. We'll help you.
She's nicer than the man you spoke to.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item 106. Yes. SUP 73653, public hearing, applicant owner Ignacio Covarubias. For possible action, appeal, denial by the planning commission, our request for special use permit post-short-term residential rental use. At 4620 Nolan, R1, single-family residential zone, Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Planning commission recommends denial. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing. I declare it open. And are you the applicant?
Yes. My name is Ignacio Covarubias.
And with you is?
My wife.
Which her name is Giselle Covarubias.
Okay. Wonderful.
Hello and good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor, council members and Mayor Protem, Tarkanian. Thank you for your time on meeting and speaking with us in person. In regards to our home on SUP-73653, to create as a short-term rental, we ask to give us an opportunity of six months or a year to evaluate our performance when that time comes up. There will be no third parties on our property. We will be in charge of cleaning, greening and correcting any matters that might comes up. As we will follow up with any rules and regulations you might imply on us, our neighbors has our direct number and we will there... And we will there... And we as well has their support. We live in our home for 18 years and now our community... And we know our community very well. We do not plan to sell our home. We plan to come back in about five to seven years by saying that we bought a separate home due that we needed a bigger yard due to our small entrepreneurial business. We are only 10 minutes away of a drive. We just don't want our home to be destroyed by careless renters due by me saying that I am in charge of our friend's home property and I deal with his issues. This way, our home will be more intact and not destroyed. And if once approved, we will more... We will move forward on getting all the rules and regulations enclosed by the planning commission department. So we are asking for approval and a chance and opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anyone here on agenda item 106? Please come forward, state your name for the record. Seeing and hearing no one, or anyone, I should say. I'm going to close public hearing. We are now going to go to Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, the applicant is proposing to operate a non-owner occupied two-bedroom short-term residential rental unit. The subject site does comply with all of our minimum distance requirements as set forth in Title 1912. Therefore, staff has recommended approval. It should be noted that SUP 73176 was denied at the July 18th city council meeting. Therefore, that was a request within a similar area, but because that one was denied, there is no distance waiver and so staff has recommended approval. Mary McElhone, Deputy Director for Planning, has some additional information.
Thank you.
Mary McElhone, for the record. We've had some code enforcement action on this one. Case was opened on June 13th and a conversation took place on June 22nd with code enforcement and Mrs. Covarubias. And it was explained to her at that time that the short-term rental activity must cease since it was noticed that they had listings identified on U-Host. She said she understood. Code enforcement went back out on July 20th and made contact with a short-term renter from Switzerland who was saying he was staying there for a week. So a notice and order was issued July 25th of 2018 and there has been no confirmed activity since then. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments from council before I turn it over to Councilwoman Tarkanian? Okay, Councilwoman.
I visited your home, didn't I? Did I visit your home personally?
Yes.
And it is a very nice home.
Thank you.
And I felt that I should go along with a short-term rental there because they weren't within 600 feet. However, the concern I have, and I just found this out, Mary, I just found this out when we met yesterday, was it? And that was that they rented it out before you had approval to rent it out. And then you were sent a notice of cease and desist, you told me, Mary. And they still rented it out.
That's correct. Our code enforcement notes show that our code enforcement officer had a conversation with Mrs. Covarubias on June 22nd about not being able to rent the property while the license, until the license was actually obtained. And then our code enforcement officers received a phone call that it was being rented out that went on seg and spoke to the renter from Switzerland and that was July 20th.
And the renter from Switzerland told you that she was there for just the week?
That's correct. The renters said that they were staying there for a week and they had booked through Airbnb.
Yeah. I want to tell you, I really felt when I left your house that I was going to move for approval of this. But I... And the word I have, I have more short-term rentals than any other ward has, sometimes double other places. But I have to be very careful because I can't over-innudate the ward. And when I find that you didn't follow the rules, like we had the two ladies that were here today and they went through all that problem and all that stuff they did, they did it in order to do it the legal way. But you didn't do it that way.
With that, which it was spoken, I didn't have no...
Can you speak closer in the...
Oh, yes. With that, he did spoke to me. I didn't have nobody there and I cannot blame my husband for my mistakes. But yes, as she stated that day, yes, there were one person of Switzerland only. But from then on, we had no activities whatsoever. It was totally closed and we kept it that way.
You had it before, but after the cease and desist, you did it again. And that was a lady from Switzerland. Am I correct, Mary? Please, that was a lady from Switzerland?
That was a... Yes. So we made contact with the owner, had the discussion on June 22nd, gave the warning. She... We found the renter there from Switzerland on July 20th and the notice and order was issued on July 25th.
Okay, was the cease and desist before?
The cease and desist was actually issued on July 25th after we caught the renter there.
Oh, okay. Okay. I just have to say to you, I can't move for approval on this because if... And you know, don't you and your husband own the house together? You have equal responsibility in order to be... And I know it may sound hard on that, but I have to be that way in order to do it in a balanced way within my ward, so I have...
Could I interrupt you? Because I'm... You maybe got it, but I didn't. I'm really... Maybe it's the afternoon. One more time, Ms. McElhone. What happened was they had gone through the process, blah, blah, blah. Code enforcement goes out and finds a different couple or the person from Switzerland. And finds a different couple or the person from Switzerland?
The person from Switzerland. So what happened is they opened a case on June 13th of 2018, and that was based on the fact that they noticed that there were listings on the website.
Okay, now that was separate. They get a seat right then.
Right. And so they had a conversation. They called Mrs. Covarubias and explained to her, and this was on June 22nd, that the short-term rental activity must cease until the license is obtained. So she was warned at that point in time.
In June.
And that was in June, on June 22nd, she was told. And then, on July 20th, our Code Enforcement Officer actually went out to the location, to the property, knocked on the door, and spoke with the short-term renter who stated he was from Switzerland and confirmed he was staying for one week, and then he had booked through Airbnb. At that point in time, the Code Enforcement Officer issued the official notice and order, which is a cease and desist, and the date of that was July 25th.
Okay, but the first cease and desist was in June.
The first one was in June, and it was just a verbal warning, a verbal warning. And that was based on what they saw on the website.
So, okay, that's where I got confused. That was a warning that was delivered
Right.
To Mrs. or Mr.?
It was delivered to Mrs. Covarubias.
Okay. So you did get a verbal warning from who came to the house, so you knew there should be no more, right? At that point? Because you were warned, and then came back the person, the person from Switzerland, after the warning, when they said, "Don't", then you went ahead and let the person from Switzerland come in, and then there was a formal notification, correct?
Mayor, yes, that is correct.
Perfect, I get it. Please continue.
And that was done through Airbnb, which is obviously to have short-term rentals. The last one was done through Airbnb, which was, so I cannot, in my own good, in my conscience, I just can't, so I have to move for denial.
Okay, so your motion, there's a motion to deny. Please vote and please post. Sadly, sadly.
Yes.
Because without the warning, that's where I was confused. I thought the warning, you know, could have been given to somebody else. No.
And when I left their house, that's what I was going, I was going to approve it. Very good people. Very good people.
Too bad. Okay, we're on to now. 107 has been abayed to the 21st of November, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and now we're on to Agenda Item 108. And I have a, you're all welcome to come speak. So what we're going to do, this is Agenda Item 108, SUP 73838, public hearing applicant Jonathan Gonon, owner 777 Ventures LLC. For possible action, appeal of the denial by the Planning Commission, our request for a special use permit for an existing short-term rental, residential rental use of 1413 Maria Elena Drive, R1, single-family residential zone, Ward Three with Councilman Coffin. Planning Commission recommends denial, staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open, and is the applicant or representative present. And so we'll call you up. You can sit right there, even though it says reserved. And you're, are you the owner? Are you the owner?
I am the owner of one of the homes in that cul-de-sac.
We're all here neighbors speaking against the item.
Oh, oh, he's speaking against as well. Okay, very civil. All right, so anybody from the public, we're going to keep this open, but let me go to Mr. Summerfield first, please.
Madam Mayor, the applicant is proposing to continue to operate a licensed, non-owner occupied four-bedroom, short-term residential rental unit. The subject site does comply with all the minimum distance requirements as set forth by Title 1912. Therefore, staff has recommended approval. But as in the last couple cases, Deputy Planning Director Mary McElhone has some additional information to share with you.
Thank you. Please, Ms. McElhone.
Mary McElhone, for the record. So this licensed location has had a few issues. On March 15th of 2018 of this year, the city business licensing through the other city of Las Vegas agency was notified that a commercial filming permit was being filed for filming at this location. So our license officers actually went out and actually made contact with Jonathan Gonon and explained that the filing permit was not allowed. He stated he didn't have any knowledge of the filming permit, but he was educated on the fact that the short-term rentals cannot be operated for that type of activity or parties or anything along those lines. Then on June 12th, 2018, what appears to be a party took place at this location. Unfortunately, it was not coiled into the city of Las Vegas. It was called into Clark County Code Enforcement Division. Clark County forwarded the information to us, but it was only after the party had taken place on Monday morning. Our license officers went out to the location and actually found the owner, Mr. Gonon, onsite at the time, and he was cleaning up the property. He said he was informed after the fact, didn't know about the property, but would ensure that this didn't happen again. Then, on July 22nd, on a Sunday afternoon, license officers through the short-term rental hotline received another complaint for excessive occupants and vehicles. When they went out that Sunday afternoon, they found out that there was a party taking place for a young girl who was turning 21 years old. There were eight vehicles on the property, 20 adults and 20 kids. So they were also cited for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, I'm going to do something that is a little different. I'm going to keep public comment open, but because there's so many of you, I'm going to first go to Councilman Coffin, since it's his ward, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have, thank you very much, all of you, for attending. You could not get the word that I have told Mr. Gonon that I cannot move to approve, that I will move to deny his application if I cannot hear anything substantially in favor of it, and he himself is not appearing today. So if those people, because this is a public hearing, those of you who are here to speak, if you could marshal your comments together, perhaps pick a few spokesmen, you've already put yourselves on record. So in the interest of brevity and ending the council on its very last item, Ron DeCarre, you're one.
Mayor Goodman, Councilmembers, I'm Stacy Brown of Maria Elena Drive. Thank you for allowing us to address you today on this matter. All of the neighbors on Maria Elena are adamantly opposed to this short-term rental, as are neighbors on Bracken and 15th Street. We do not deserve to live in a business district. We have had a nightmare of a time with this house. We have had Metro Police officers onsite with their bullhorns, asking the people inside to come out and leave their guns inside. Helicopters of Metro have been hovering above for hours. We have had drones from that house flying over into neighboring backyards. It's a continual taxi line like you're at McCarran International Airport. There are large groups of strange men who leer at you when they're at that house. And since the Planning Commission meeting, there have been other people coming out of that house trying to intimidate the neighbors against speaking against it. We are fed up, and we don't think we deserve it. Having that house in our neighborhood certainly does not support the city government's purpose of building community to make life better because this Airbnb house, this short-term rental, is certainly not making our lives better on Maria Elena. It's a historic cul-de-sac. Very prominent Las Vegans have owned land there, such as Howard Hughes, the Marshalls, the Russos. Ron, why don't you go ahead and speak to that? Thank you for considering our comments today.
Thank you.
We certainly advocate the denial of this short-term rental.
Thank you.
Mayor Goodman, thank you. Bob, happy birthday on the 7th, by the way. My name is Ron DeCarre. I own 1404 Maria Elena Drive. It's the old Marshall Russo house.
Oh, you have.
Our neighborhood, you know, obviously has a great historic value to us, and, you know, my partner and I have 10 business licenses here in town, and we work all day long. And when I come home at midnight, and, you know, finally, I get to sleep at maybe 2:00, I don't want to be woken up at 3:00, 3:30 in the morning with police cars and the SWAT team in our neighborhood. I know the gentleman has, you know, spent money on the house, and we're thrilled that it's fixed up, but, you know, he can have a long-term rental there and find some nice family that wants to be on that neighborhood, but that cul-de-sac has been so quiet for years, and I've been in on that street for 19 years, and I lived one block over for another 10 down on 16th and Franklin. So, you know, the downtown area is my home, along with my businesses. So we would really appreciate it if you would deny the SUP. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been in your home before you, before you had it. It's a beautiful home. Hope you've kept it up.
Yes, ma'am. It's very nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. If you're all comfortable that you've been represented well by these comments, is there anyone else that's out here that would like to speak on this? I'm going to close the public comment and turn it over to you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. The, I had a nice meeting, a cordial meeting, with the young man who owns the house, and he's, he understands. He understands this really isn't the place for this kind of thing after having had some experience in it. And of course, I think he knew I was going to deny it all the time because I had been, I helped build that cul-de-sac. I was, Jose Blasco and I were classmates, and in 1960, or there about, 6061, when that first house, 1411, I think it is, no, 1450, was built on the corner of the largest lot. Why, I helped put that together. So I feel like, I kind of know that better than anybody. And, yeah, you're right, Art Marshall lived there. I don't think Howard Hughes really ever had any residence or anything there, but sometimes myths live longer than facts.
And the people that built the temple.
Mr. and Mrs. Blasco's right-hand man was Lou Sanchez in the contracting business for 50 years. He had one of the houses. And so those things are historic, they're of value, built around 6061, something like that. And I drove it Monday, and I also drove, I drove it not only on Maria Elena, but also on 16th beneath the house. And that's not a good place to be, right there. It's 20, almost 20 feet below the elevation. So it is really, it can be obtrusive, and I'm sure there have been problems in those short parties they had. So, Your Honor, for all the above reasons and the testimony given, I'm going to move for denial of Item 108.
Thank you. There's a motion on 108 to deny. Please vote and please post. Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, if I might, just as a quick follow-up, I do want to be clear on one thing. This denial today does not mean that there will not be any more short-term rentals at this property. He is a licensed operator.
Till June.
And so based on the current ordinance, he can continue to operate until July of 2019. Ms. McElhone is giving out the hotline number. Just because he can operate a short-term rental, to be very clear, that does not mean he can operate parties or any of those other things. So she's making sure that the neighbors have the hotline number. We would encourage anyone in this neighborhood who has, is witnessing a party or anything else that's against the code, call. If we substantiate those issues, that license can be pulled if we have continuing problems going forward. But this denial does not stop him from being able to operate a short-term rental between now and July of 2019 when the ordinance requires an approved SUP.
And so the most important thing is, he is notified of this denial, and that we will be watching him like a hawk. And one phone call, one, anything that can be established and substantiated, that would then close him down. But don't make anything up. Don't go in there and do it yourself. Just do it legitimately. And thank you all for coming down. I know you've been here a long time, but we appreciate it. It's a beautiful neighborhood, a great street. I had no idea he did any digging. I'm not sure I believe him, but I know that street is beautiful, and you just, everything about it. So thank you for caring, coming down on this. Thank you. Okay, so we will now move on to Agenda Item 109, setting the date on any appeals filed or required public hearings, instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates, and appeals from city planning commission meetings, dangerous building nuisance letter abatements, please.
Thank you, will do.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to second citizen participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited within the jurisdiction of the city council. I am not sure anymore, because I was told that the second time they could be able to speak on anything. It's the first one that's restricted to Agenda items only, but the second one should be open for public comment. So if you'll look at it, today we will stay as it's read, which is no subject may be acted upon by the city council unless the subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record, the amount of discussion, any single subject, well, as the amount of time. Any speaker is allowed, may be limited. This is your opportunity to address the council, but council will not respond or engage in dialogue. Any members public wishing to speak under this portion of the agenda. Ma'am.
Hi. So this had to be on the agenda to speak today?
No, you just go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Are we being limited to three minutes? Please.
Okay. I brought exhibits for all of you on this. I've brought a petition.
Your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Susan McMasters.
And you live in the city?
I do.
Thank you.
Here's a petition to be recorded, 135 names with exhibits. And I, so I won't wander around. I did, I typed up some comments. And thank you for having us today. I'm here today about the Wifter Dog Park remodel project on Vegas Drive and Rock Springs in Ward One. I have a petition signed by 128 community patrons in dissent of the five-foot meandering sidewalks proposed being placed on the interior of the new dog park area. There were three additional people who didn't care one way or another, and there were two women who did favor the sidewalks and told me they had spoken to Councilwoman Tarkanian on their view. My petition represents at least 90% of the regular dog park users. I've visited with everybody early in the morning, in mid-afternoon, early afternoon, and at night, and I do go here daily. We were provided with one town hall meeting in September 2017 where 34 patrons participated. There was no follow-up meeting on what the card, I'm sorry, park would look like after our comments, and we had expected a follow-up meeting. Meanwhile, the Bill Breyer Park, less than a mile away from Wifter, received $2.5 million in improvements this year, and it does, it does not have dog parks. I, hopefully later they will. I have presented packets to all of you that include the current city plan, the plan the patrons wanted with the removal of the sidewalks. Also pictured are planned 10-foot concrete rings around each tree. This is an old, old park, and a small park, and yet luckily still has all of its old trees. And there's 30 plus of them. And the picture of the wooden benches, where usually standardly the concrete benches are used, and some email chains between a few patrons. We've been told that the sidewalks are ADA so others can walk through the park. I want to remind everyone that this is a small dog park, and it was a dog park, not a people park. The standard ADA, ADA entries used at other local parks in the vicinity and other areas work very well without any complaints. We will find, you will find a picture of the above-mentioned entrances in your packet as well. Currently, Wifter Dog Park does not have any ADA entrances. The covered benches should be placed at the side of the direct entry for safety and ease of the elderly patron or ADA user. From the Wifter Park parking lot to the small dog entry is 320 feet. Currently, no path of travel is provided, and you have to walk through the grass and around the tree roots. The large dog park is 186 feet away and does have a sidewalk.
Thank you, ma'am. You're going to have to pull it, the end together.
No, in an open meeting law, when you bring a petition, I have the right to speak for all 28.
No, no, no.
The mayor has the ability to limit the amount of time that anybody can speak.
And I did say that upfront, thank you. So, and you gave us a packet, and I'm sure we'll familiarize ourselves.
I have these comments, except my other ones. Can I make one last quick comment?
Yes, we can give you one more.
Okay. The biggest thing that everybody gripes about with the dog parks is that we hear, "Oh, it's just a dog park." I don't know if any of you go to the dog park, or how regularly, but a dog park is a place that has opened up something, a place for the elderly, for the single person that never has contact with people, and now visits with people, makes friends. It's more than a dog park.
Thank you. Having a dog, I appreciate it.
No, I don't think the city does, no.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment. Nobody at any time who works for the city, who works for my ward, has ever said it was just a dog park. We had a meeting. We invited everybody to it. We had our little green dots, you know, and we said, "Do you and we said, do you want to add anything else? Do you want to add? Please. You are not the only expert in dogs. First, I'd like to tell you that we have discussed the idea with the sidewalk, and I don't think the sidewalk is going to go that way. We have to recognize ADA, which I think I'm a relative expert in. And ADA, it'll go around the S side, so it will not affect the inside of the dog park at all. We will be taking care of the benches, so that'll be in a better position. But the fact of the matter is, we went to that meeting. Never in my life did I think that I'd have a meeting where nobody would ask anything for a child. Everything was for the dogs. And I was very impressed, and so were the members of my staff.
There were only 34 people at that meeting.
It was at that meeting that the three separate dog partitions were brought up. And I didn't bring it up because I never thought of it. And we have staff that was there, we have my own staff that was there, you were there. And you never brought up to us at that time, hey, wait a minute, no three dog parks, but we had it on our list because somebody had asked to add it. So I, and I, I just want you to know that I feel we are going in the right direction. I think that we have to leave some expertise decisions to our specialists in the city. I think we've done a good job with our parks, with the dog parks. And if you think we're neglecting the dogs, we're having special exercise places for them. We are having, we went ahead, one of the suggestions was, you know, don't have the tin there so they'll burn their paws when they get their water. We've done everything we possibly could. We met every single suggestion that was made to us at that meeting. And the $2.5 million difference between Bill Breyer Park and Wifter Park, because Wifter was already an established park, Bill Breyer was a new park, it never had been fully finished. When I came on board, we had a half-finished park, and we said we're going to do it in stages, and that's what we've done, and the last stage was the recent one. So thank you so much. I appreciate and I respect your concern, but understand, other people do have that concern. I have a member of my staff that-
That's why 128 people signed their name to it.
I, you know, I had some people call me and tell me how you were pressuring them to sign.
I didn't pressure.
Okay. Okay, I think that will be fine. We appreciate it. It was kind that Councilwoman responded, which we don't even do otherwise, but I think, thank you, appreciate it. Okay. We'll move on to Agenda Item 111, council member recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Any member of the council wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, I'm going to let the birthday boy go first, then I'm going to Mayor Pro Tem because you've had a very strong day. Go.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be real brief. I, I hoped my wife had not heard my comments about not getting breakfast on council days, and apparently she did not, so she hasn't seen it yet, but she just heard it because I'm a mouthy guy. And here she is, she's here to protest my comments. I just want to say, Mary, would you please wave your hand and say hello? We're honored with Mary, my wife, and her guest Sonia Swanson, who is a freelance journalist. And I believe in this three-hour session, you saw how the council works, the good and the bad, and I think particularly the exchange of conviviality and collegiality that we try to maintain, not just for show, but for, in fact, the way we operate. So thank you for being here. And Mary, I'll see you at home later.
And wait, and Mary, you know something? Well, we love your husband. We really feel sorry for you.
Did you say we felt-
Day in and day out, at night, in the morning, to listen to this is, I got one at home myself, but this one takes the cake.
Yeah, thank you very much.
But we do love him and wish him a happy birthday.
And thank you very much for the cake, Your Honor, and all those who did, I hope a piece was safe for you, Mary. We'll find out.
And it was delicious. Okay, Mayor Pro Tem, you deserve it today.
I deserve it. I was going to tell, Mary, I was going to tell you anyway what he said, so I just want you to know that.
You're a snitch.
I was, I'm a snitch, Mary. You know, as a reminder for all the council wards, WINEAP is hosting an application workshop for youth groups who are interested in applying for a $1,000 community service grant. The funds can be used towards purchasing supplies for a community service project in the neighborhood of your school. For more information, call Candace Boring at 702-229-2072, 229-2072. And then we get to get into some fun for Halloween. Opportunity Village is having a Fright Night. Opportunity Village, located at 6300 West Oakie Boulevard, has a new indoor haunted attraction this October. Vegas Fright Nights delivers scares with two separate haunted houses, and they're jam-packed with spine-tingling special events, breathtaking electronics, and shriek-inducing scare zones. The intensity of fright level is reduced from 5:30 to 6:30, so you can bring your little ones then. But after 6:30, it increases, so then the older ones who like to be frightened can go at that time. For ticket information, visit vegasfrightnights.com, vegasfrightnights.com. All proceeds from this Fright Night will benefit adults with intellectual disabilities. I'd like to make a mention about National Night Out, which we celebrated yesterday in partnership with Metro and the school district police. We began the evening with a safety walk from Rotary Park to Meadows Mall. We had children from the schools walk in the march, and we had some people even from Clark marching in the march, they're ROTC. And the ones who had the most marches was Griffith Elementary School. And in Meadows Parking Lot, we had hot dogs and hamburgers donated by Walmart, and they were very good. They were cooked by the school police. Parents can visit with, did visit with vendors who shared information while the children checked out the police and fire vehicles, and it was very informative. I was able to go to it and see all of the booths, and I think it was very good. We finally have Bob Baskin Park reopening. The mayor does not have to go by it anymore and see all the equipment there, not moving from week to week. So at long last, we're celebrating the formal reopening of Bob Baskin Park at 2801 West Oakie Boulevard. So you can join Mayor Goodman and myself as we officially dedicate the park at that time. The renovations include a new splash pad, new playground for older children, and a soft-surfaced walking path. And at the event, residents can enjoy a free jump house, as well as free hot dogs, popcorns, as long as they last. At DUS, the movie Hotel Transylvania III will begin. I didn't see one and two, so I'll see if I can pick up on three, how scary that is. If you're coming to the movie, please bring low-back chairs or blankets to enjoy it. On October 13th, Saturday, 9:00 a.m., seniors and youth are invited to volunteer in the cleanup of the Bonanza Trail near Mirabelli Park and the neighborhood alleyways. We have a lot of problems there on that Bonanza Trail. It keeps getting, people aren't picking up after themselves. So volunteers are to meet at the Leibern Senior Center at 6230 Garwood Avenue. It's a wonderful way for the teens to get their school service hours and enjoy the great weather that we usually have in October. Lastly, we are having a family trunk-or-treat in partnership with the Mirabelli Community Center. I'm helping sponsor a trunk-or-treat and a movie in the park on Thursday, October 25th, beginning at 6:00 p.m. Children who are toddlers to 10 years of age and who are in costume can enjoy the trick-or-treating. We'll have special treats for them. And the movie Beetlejuice will be shown in Mirabella Park beginning at 7:30 p.m. Parking is located at 6200 Hargrove Avenue. I hope we see people who are listening to this, watching this on TV. I hope we see a lot of you because it's going to be a fun Halloween. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Creer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ward Five's got a lot of things going on. We have our Ward Five Community Forum, which is the first forum we're doing. So join me for our first forum on Wednesday, October 10th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the West Las Vegas Library Theater, located in 951 West Lake Mead Boulevard. This event will be an opportunity for me to discuss economic development, public safety, homeless initiatives, workforce development, and community engagement. We're going to have various City of Las Vegas directors will also participate to discuss what their department has to offer to the residents and to speak to attendees individually. So for more information, contact my office at 702-229-5443. A STOMP, the West Las Vegas Library will host STOMP, which stands for Standing Together Opposing Misuse of Power, on Saturday, October 20th, from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. This free community event for men, women, and teens promotes prevention awareness and advocacy to end domestic violence. Resources will be available from professional organizations and agencies, and several interactive workshops and discussions are planned. Registration is required, though, and participation begins at 11:00 a.m. at the West Las Vegas Arts Center. This event is co-presented by Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Las Vegas Alumni Chapter, Las Vegas Clark County Library District, and the City of Las Vegas. For more information, visit www arts las vegas dot O R G, or call 702-229-ARTS, A-R-T-R-S, which is 2787. Seniors Got Talent Showcase Mix and Mingle. Now, the Doolittle Senior Center will host their upcoming showcase Mix and Mingle on November 14th. If you are interested in participating, tryouts will take place on Tuesday, October 23rd, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., and Wednesday, October 24th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. If you, if you should have any questions, please call 702-229-7529. And the Chili Cook-Off, the Doolittle, excuse me, the Las Vegas Senior Center, located at 451 East Bonanza Road, will host the Chili Cook-Off on Wednesday, October 24th, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Registration is required, your chili will be sampled, and a winner will be crowned. For more information, please call 702-229-6454. And then, and the Police Athletic League is offering free tennis at the Andre Agassi Boys and Girls Club on Tuesday through Thursday from 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And boxing at Steel's Boxing Gym on Tuesday through Thursday from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. for youth between the ages of six to 17. For more information on how to enroll, call PAL at Southern Nevada at 702-828-6521, or email Officer Taylor at g6998t@lvmpd.com, or Officer Parker at a14160p@lvmpd.com. And don't forget, you can always stay in touch with us on our social media, on Twitter, it's @CedricCreer, Instagram, CouncilmanCreer, and Facebook, Councilman CedricCreer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
Thank you. So our first, we have one, Mondays with Michelle in October. It's going to be October 8th, from, from noon to 6:00 p.m. at the Centennial Hills YMCA. We have our Movies in the Park, October 5th, so it's, it's coming up. It's this Friday, and we are going to see Marvel movies, Avengers, Infinity Wars. So it'll be Friday, October 5th, at 6:30 at the Centennial Hills Amphitheater. Then we are going to have a really, really fun, safe Halloween celebration on Halloween. So Wednesday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., we will be at our Tulley Springs Park, and we're going to have a lot of treats for the kids. Community vendors will be there, food trucks, spooky flashlights. We're going to have a costume parade, hay rides, crafts, games. We're going to have a DJ. It's going to be, again, a big celebration out in Ward Six for Halloween. One of our constituents out in the Northwest, they love the shredding, the document shredding. So we are bringing the document shredding on November 10th, Saturday, from 10:00 to noon, at the Centennial Hills Community Center YMCA, and that's going to be 10:00 to noon. And then we have a pet to be adopted out. It's a little cute cat named Jules. It's a domestic shorthair. She's a two-year-old spayed female, and if you would go adopt her, it would cost you $25. But if you go in the next 24 hours, I will pay for that cat to find a great home.
Free for his birthday.
Yeah.
Free for his birthday.
Yeah. Free for Bob Coffin's birthday. Yes, and, yes, so, and that kind of wraps up Ward Six, and have a great day.
Councilman Soroka.
Why, thank you, Mayor. Get those slides up there. Thank you. Just takes a minute. There we go. Ward Two announcements, Councilman Steve Soroka. In our quest to help our missing children, on the next slide, we are continuing our partnership with Nevada Child Seekers. In this month, we have Emily Benitez. She's 13 years old, she's about 5'4" inches tall, she's about 120 pounds, and has brown hair and eyes. Unfortunately, she's been missing until late August, so shortly after school started, and she should be in school right now. We last saw her around Nellis Avenue, Nellis Boulevard in Sahara. So if you have any information, please reach out to Nevada Child Seekers at the number listed, or the Metro Police. We've had a good track record finding the folks that we're seeking, so please keep your eyes out for Emily. Thank you. Next slide, please. As we move forward, we know some of the big-box retail stores already have their Christmas decorations out, but let's not get ahead of ourselves. We still have a couple of holidays before then. We have our Halloween festivities, and as you can tell, you can almost make your rounds every week around the city and have a good trick-or-treat or trunk-or-treat activity. This one, I think it's the first one in the city, is October 13th, between 10:00 and 2:00. It's going to be the trunk-or-treat, so please come on out. We're going to have our Metro Police come out and see if they bring their motorcycles out, and we're going to have the Las Vegas Fire Department out bringing out their fire trucks. So come on out, say hi, check out the equipment, and get some candy at the first trunk-or-treat, and then don't forget, the next weeks you can go to the other wards and have fun there, too. So next slide. There we go. We have our shredding event on November 3rd at the Veterans Memorial Community Center, shares a parking lot with Palo Verde High School in Ward Two. That will be on November 3rd. It'll be for two hours, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. We do have a limit of five boxes, and I think everybody recognizes the value of shredding, but further this time, we are sponsored by Melencrot. Now, what's important about that is we all have prescription medications, and what do we do with them when they're expired? Do we throw them in the, in the trash, and then they go to the landfill and filter into our ecosystem? Do we flush them down the toilet, and they end up in Lake Mead and then back in our drinking water? Well, Melencrot has a solution. They have a packet that we will be giving out to everybody that comes through the shredding event, and you can put 45 prescription pills in just six ounces of water, and it neutralizes all of the active ingredients in the medication. And then you, then you can dispose of it without poisoning our ecosystem or our water.
Give that medication to the federal government for the transportation of the nuclear waste radioactive material. Neutralize it, deactivate it with your little bags of whatever it is.
Mayor, we're on to something. I like where you're going with that.
I think so. And you're military, so put that out there.
Let's make it happen. You know, we need a little bit more U.S.I. funds. We need to partner on that. I like where you're going. Thank you, Mayor. Great idea. But these bags are very important, and you know, our opiates are often found by our children and our, by, of the parents of children who then get hooked on them or are already hooked in some other way and get addicted to them. So let's dispose of our opiates properly and all of our other medications. Thank you to Melencrot for sponsoring this. Thank you. Next slide, please. There we go. We're already out to the end of November. We're talking about November 29th. That'll be the week after Thanksgiving, before all the holiday parties begin in the morning from 8:00 to 9:30. And there you'd see a picture of me with the owner of Avery's Coffee House. So come on out, say hi, and it's always fun to chat, but if you have serious business, we're ready to talk to that issue, too. But also gets Avery's Coffee some of, he's just a local coffee shop. We're happy to give him business. Next slide, please. And if you need to contact me, you can contact me on any of these venues. Please have a safe and healthy couple of weeks till we talk to you again in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as far as my schedule, the Little People of America Walk for Dwarfism Awareness Month in October will be held this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. at Wayne Bunker Park out in Ward Four, where I will be going. And today, while it's Councilman Coffin's birthday on Sunday, today happens to be the famous Roy Horn's 74th birthday, Roy of Siegfried and Roy, so we certainly wish him a very happy birthday. And we have also the Springs Preserve on Saturday, the 13th, at 8:30. Our annual Walk for Water, which, as you know, it's the seventh year now that was started by Cirque du Soleil's Guille La Liberté, which is save water internationally. Every country is doing it. It's benefiting the One Drop Foundation, and it's a 2.7-mile walk for- It's benefiting the One Drop Foundation, and it's a 2.7-mile walk for advocacy, education, microloans related to global water issues. This month, of course, we'll be celebrating the 21st Annual Pride Night Parade, Friday night, the October 19th. Pre-show begins at the Fremont Street Main Stage at 6:45 p.m., followed by the parade at 8:00 p.m. on Fourth Street, so please come on down, show your pride and support. And our next council meeting is Wednesday, October 17th, in council chambers. And as always, we thank our wonderful staff for all that they do. We thank our technological support that really still pales to the public human being, but we appreciate all that you do, our marshals, and of course, our wonderful family of colleagues. So happy birthday, have a good time, be safe, everybody, and thank you all. And thank you our clerk's office, most specifically.
We are adjourned.
And therefore, we are adjourned.